Hi Mark. Boden, I don't know if I said hello already.
A dinner, Boden?
This is a snack.
A what?
A snack.
Oh, a snack.
Double Lunchables for dinner.
Double Lunchables for, yes.
Oh, I've committed to college. I've signed.
To where?
Tame Riddle.
Twenty-five years.
It's in Prescott, Arizona. Yeah, so.
Jack just got in the mission one night, so I was all excited.
How awesome.
Where is he going?
We don't know where he's going.
This is gonna be late. partial here and Heather is on Zoom, so that's all.
The business school, the last one. He applied.
Are you asking Matt, are you manager zooming in?
Oh, Arizona State.
Talk to her.
Okay, it won't surprise me if she was.
Dang busy.
Watching on YouTube.
Oh, yeah. I just, I mean, I kind of be prepared then.
University.
University.
That's so, I've been to.
That's what you did, right?
I can already tell you my dad, my dad's gonna text more of his buddies. We're gonna go bike race and now we're gonna go see my son.
I like this time of year. I don't like it. Cause Prescott has whiskey rose, so like.
Boden, if you're in Arizona, it's Prescott. It's not Prescott. Yeah, just a little, little tidbit.
Welcome, everybody. This is the first meeting of the month.
Is that on?
Students of the month and I'm looking, I know we have at least one, maybe Richard, your student of the month.
Is your mic on?
But it's.
Thank you.
Sorry, it's not picking up my voice. Natalie, all right, would you come on down?
This is great.
There's the camera right there. So you want to stand right here? Am I pronouncing your, your names correctly? Okay, well, thanks for joining us. Do you mind telling everybody how old you are, what grade you're in and where you go to school? Bristol River Elementary. All right. And what do you do for fun?
Nothing much.
Sounds like you spend a lot of time being a good student, so that's great. This is what your teachers have to say about you, Natalie. Natalie is a very responsible second grade student. She continues to try even when the work is hard. Natalie is a very thoughtful classmate. I'm very proud of how often I find her taking time to do her best work. Thank you, Natalie. The world needs more of you. Congratulations.
Looks like Jayden is not here.
Okay. It being six oh three, we'll call the meeting to order. Kathy, we do roll call.
Ben Baumfach.
Here.
Lonnie Kitchen.
Here.
Dan Richardson.
Here.
Heather Henry.
She's here. She's here via Zoom.
Marty Silverstein.
Here.
Lani's. Erica Sparhawk.
Thank you. I understand Erica is home pretty ill and Luis will be a little bit late. So moving on to item number two on our agenda is the consent agenda. Item A is the accounts payable. Item B is our trustee minutes for a special meeting on November sixteenth. Item C is minutes from our special meeting on November nineteenth. Item D is our minutes from regular meeting on November twenty-third. Item E is a liquor license renewal for the Triple Creek Duck Country and item F is a liquor license renewal for Ming's. Any questions or a motion on the consent agenda?
Move to approve this consent agenda.
Second.
Heather, you're just gonna have to speak up in case I don't remember to look up there. But we have a motion by Lonnie and a seconded by Marty to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
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 I was saying no. Motion passes. All right. Item number three is persons present not on the agenda. Is there anyone here who'd like to address the board on an item that's not on the agenda? Okay. Welcome, Richard.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Richard Votero and I reside in Carbondale. And I'm here once again inquiring about community policing. I, we've been without a television for a long time, so I didn't, wouldn't have seen it there. I look at the papers and I don't get to listen to Ben's synopsis that often, which is quite good when I do hear it. But I haven't seen anything about movement towards community policing and bringing the community into that discussion. And I'm curious about that.
Well, I feel like that's a softball question because we have.
It's very soft.
We have, we have the, on that, on our agenda tonight, so there's a memo in our packet and Chief Wilson will be here tonight to, to sort of give us an update and outline a next steps.
Okay, and what, okay, that's excellent because, that's good, because I had a little surprise incident. And I thought I would tell the chief before I told you.
Well, he'll be here.
I don't know if I'll tell him tonight, but thank you.
Yeah, it's, it's laid on the agenda, Richard. It's not, we're not supposed to talk about till about eight fifty, but it is on the agenda. We'll see, see how long-winded we all are tonight. Okay, is there anyone else who'd like to address the board on an item that's not on the agenda? And I don't see anybody else on there. Any attendees, Kevin?
No, not seeing any hands raised.
Okay. All right, we will move on to trustee comments. Marty?
Well, I have a couple of comments. First one is I would encourage everyone to please shop locally if you can. There are plenty of stores here in town that want your business and by shopping there, you help support them, their employees and the town. So I know you can buy stuff on, online, but take a look at your local merchants and see if they can't meet your needs. Second thing, I want to give my hats off to Rafta and to Dan in particular. And Ben also supporting him on the board. I have been critical of Rafta in the past, but I give credit where credit is due. You have arranged for there to be a bus stop at, by the city market, by the new city market, which is invaluable to those people in town who don't have vehicles. They have access to a grocery store, to a pharmacy and to a bank. So that's huge. Secondly, by, you've made Rafta more accessible to our young people by not charging them, which.
Charging less.
Well, charging them less, a dollar less, I believe it is.
Well, instead of a dollar less, it's now just a dollar.
Just a dollar to ride anywhere in the system.
Yep.
So that is, you know, to those who might be economically challenged because they're young and they're not working or whatever, you know, provides the mobility, which is the goal. The third thing is you've reduced the fees from Carbondale to Aspen and to Glenwood to make them more equitable by a dollar, I believe. And that is appreciated as well. So thank you very much for advocating for Carbondale. You know, I have still more I'd like to see in the future, but you know, I appreciate the fact that your hard work and your advocacy has helped enrich the people in this town. So thank you.
Thank you, Marty. Anything else?
Just go around the horn here. I went to a Bike Ped Trails Committee, our commission meeting last Monday. Unfortunately, we did not have enough people to have a quorum, so we ended up not having a, a full meeting. So we need members on the Bike Pedestrian and Trails Commission, if any trustees, members of the public viewing audience knows anybody who's interested in those issues. We meet first Monday of the month from six to about seven thirty PM right here at Town Hall. It's, it's not too much work, but it's a way to, to really have an impact on where we make our investments and what we prioritize along those lines. So just wanted to mention that, that they weren't able to have their meeting because they didn't have four current members able to attend. Only other thing I wanted to bring up and Dan, tell me if we want to talk about this outside the meeting instead is just who from the board might want to be on the Equity Action Project. Brian wants to, wants us to get back to him. This is the Manaus Fund Equity Action Project that we've committed to. We have seven to ten spots. I'm thinking, you know, three or so of those are probably police. Three or so are probably senior staff and there's room for a few of us. And so I don't know how we want to go about that.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I think you sent an email and responded. Let's do that outside the meeting because I think that it requires some thinking through some things.
Okay. No worries. That's my only update.
Great. Lonnie?
I had a couple of meetings this past week, kind of disappointed. I thought everybody was going to be away, but no. So I did attend a CRW CD meeting, which is the Colorado Water Conservation District with Attorney General Phil Wiser in attendance. And discussion was mostly about the Colorado River Compact that overtook common law appropriation in nineteen twenty-two by arbitrarily dividing what was then a fifteen million acre foot river in half as an attempt to disincentivize the use it or lose it practice. The nineteen twenty-two guidelines are set to expire in twenty twenty-six, which we need to keep an eye on. And the current drought contingency plan doesn't adequately address the persistent low water recovery in Lakes Powell and Me. I found the conversation a little squishy as the AG's office is more inclined to find compromise among the many stakeholders, both east and west slope interests and upper and lower basin users with the best available solution loosely around local or regional demand management by way of increased storage, which our community or our water managers have been really good about. Potentially funded by a hundred million of recovery fund dollars that they and the CWCB will look at next May. So that's kind of on the horizon and I'll keep us up to date on that. It was good to see Tarnudon as well. So that was kind of the upside of attending this little meeting. I did attend a co-venture board meeting and their revenue line is projected to be a few pennies over budget at year end closing, so that's a good thing. There's a fourth Carbondale business that received greater Colorado Venture Fund dollars, which brings co-venture their five-year goal of funding twenty million dollars in entrepreneurial startups over the finish line. So that's a positive. And the Back to Work Initiative is progressing with the diligence behind a case study that'll be the basis for the formalized program. So that's that. There was also a GCLCC meeting, Garfield County Latino Community Committee meeting. And congratulations to Paul Lazo, who accepted his seat as a new member for that organization. So that's it in brief. And then lastly, as a footnote, I have just been appointed to the Colorado Wildlife Council for the state. And my particular seat will be the municipal representative. However, I just want to make clear that it won't be just for this municipality. It's a statewide thing, right? So I'll be the voice for all municipalities within the state. The upshot is it's a nine-person council and representing the statewide interest in wildlife conservation and wildlife relative recreational opportunities with policy and legislative influence. And that seat starts January twentieth. So that's that.
Congratulations. That's a big deal.
I'm just representing every municipality in the state.
All hundred eighty-seven.
That's great. Thanks for sharing that.
Can I ask you one question, Lonnie? That Latino Community Committee.
Yes.
Is that something, it's, it's open to anybody? Like, I'm interested in that work and I think the Equity Action Project and we've made so many efforts and our work is not done, right, on embracing our full community and all that. And so is that something more of us can and should attend or?
I think so. Yeah, the whole purpose of that committee founded by Garfield County is to help us, really, to help the elected officials and the municipal and county representatives address the Latino community better. It's still in its formative stage. They're still getting their bylaws set up. So they've had some pre-meetings and so forth, information gathering, but it's been very productive. They're able to get some very excellent speakers there. And we now have our own representative in Paul, so I wanted to thank Chief Wilson, as well as the Police Department for letting Paul assume this role because it's another, you know, another dig on his time.
So he's formally representing the town of Carbondale on that?
He's representing the Garfield County community in general, but as a representative of this end of the county. Yeah.
When is the next meeting?
It hasn't been quite set yet because of the holidays. This December one that happened yesterday had been moved around. Yeah, there will not be one in January, but I'll keep everybody updated as to when the next one will happen. I did ask if they were familiar with the Equity Action. They know who Brian is. They weren't familiar with his program. So that, you know, I, I did ask the question.
Thanks for the update.
Yeah.
Thanks, Lonnie.
Yep.
Any updates from you, Luis?
Yeah, just a quick, when I attended Parks and Rec Commission meeting last week, one of the items obviously that discussed, which we were talking about tonight, was the aquatic facility financing. We also got an update from Ruin Fork Outdoor Volunteers, during the season report, and that was great news that they also received a large grant recently. Update from Will Tempest, our athletics coordinator, obviously more leagues and other activities are happening at the rec center. And a, one other item that I believe will be coming before us, a maintenance agreement for Carbondale Lofts. Public Parkland, part, yeah, I'm sorry, public parkland dedication and park maintenance. That's it.
All right. Thanks, Luis. Marty, I can't remember if you mentioned First Friday, but my thanks to Parks and Rec, Police, Public Works, everybody for their help in making that a great success. It was really well attended. Santa even made a visit. So thanks to everybody. It was really fun. And then the only meeting I attended was a Rafta Board meeting and there was, there was a little bit there, so I'll, I'll give a little bit of an update. We approved our twenty twenty-two budget, which is robust and kudos to staff. They got another award for budget presentation, not for this one, but for previous budgets. We discussed the Love a Trail and for those of you who don't know, there is a plan for a trail to go through Snowmass, excuse me, not Snowmass, South Canyon in that area from Glenwood to Newcastle, but it's extremely expensive. There's some really tricky spots, but they're moving with, moving forward with a couple of sections. But just in, in Rafta twenty forty has committed to funding a portion of that, so they were just alerting us that construction costs were going up, but also to update us that there are two sections planned to be constructed in twenty twenty-two. Unfortunately, there's still a section in between that is the most expensive that will essentially be suspended off of the rock wall. And that's not budgeted yet, but progress is being made on the Love a Trail, which would eventually connect to Highway six and allow you to more safely ride your bike from Glenwood all the way to Junction. So that's exciting. We had our last presentation of sort of Rafta one oh one and how, how Rafta was formed and why, why Rafta exists the way it exists right now, which was really informative. All that information will go into an orientation packet for board members as well as the general pub, public, which is really great. There's a ton of information there. We had an update from the Regional Bike Share First and Last Mile Mobility Study Team. And basically in January, they're going to wrap up their work and that's when they'll have a budget for what it would cost for communities like Carbondale to integrate recycle into the community as well as recommendations on how, how that would work. So that's work for us to do in the future. We also, as I've talked to the board before, considered a new grant program for Rafta, which is a big deal. The board decided this summer that it does want to be involved in first and last mile solutions for all the member jurisdictions. And the way we decided to do that was to create a grant program. We took three million dollars from our unrestricted reserves and allocated it to this first and last mile grant program, which I'll talk about in a second. That is in addition to the money that is dedicated to recycle through the Destination twenty forty tax that was passed several years ago. So essentially what I had requested and what the board supported was, well, I should say that our Rafta staff and our attorney recommended that Destination twenty forty dollars that were essentially, there was a promise that that money would be spent on recycle. They said, you know, we would prefer that money to remain spent on recycle to, to meet the intent of that ballot initiative. And I agreed with that. However, there's this other pot of money and what I requested is that, that both, that all first and last mile solutions, be it recycle or a downtowner or what have you, be considered together under one umbrella. So the communities, so that Rafta could see how much had been spent on recycle in this community versus other stuff. So that, in my opinion, if Carbondale didn't want to pursue recycle or something else, that we, we're not necessarily penalized for that. So we did pass some guidance and there's going to be eligibility requirements for that grant. There's operating criteria. There's a maximum fifty percent match. And we also approved, excuse me, the town of Basalt's request to fund their pilot, their downtowner pilot project for the first year. So their downtowner project is essentially like the city of Aspen. It's a vehicle that has a fixed route or I believe it's on demand. Actually, I take it back. It's not a fixed route. It's on demand. It can go from town into Willets. And that first and last mile grant that Rafta now has will fund fifty percent of that first year. So now the town of Carbondale has access to funding for something similar or something different that will help us achieve that first and last mile, whatever those mobility goals are. So that's pretty exciting. And I think, Ben, you've mentioned a transportation plan in the past and I think the time is right to really think about first and last mile solutions, whether we pursue recycle or not. So. Any questions? Okay. Sorry for that being long-winded.
I mean, I would just acknowledge that's a big deal.
Yeah.
I agree.
That's a big deal, right? That our local transit agency that we're a voting member on their board now has a three million dollar fund to help its members with first and last mile projects and getting things started. We've never had that before. So I appreciate your leadership there and, and the whole board seeing that need and, and kind of keeping it separate from recycle, but also looking at the two together. I listened in on that conversation remotely and thought it was really productive.
Good. Yeah, it's exciting. It's a big deal. Okay, Boden, any comments from you?
It is finals week, so we're all grinding out.
I appreciate you being here for finals week.
Yeah, finals week and I committed to college, the college, so.
Where are you going? Embry-Riddle. Well, they're, they're a lucky school.
Congratulations.
Yeah, congrats. Mark, it's always finals week for you. Any? Say you always got a lot of work.
I was at the same Attorney General meeting that Lonnie zoomed into. And the only thing I disagree with of our Attorney General was when he said that he was pushing to hire more water lawyers. His example was that they had finally hired a west slope water lawyer, Tarnudon. So I thought that was bad news.
Selfishly speaking.
You're still resentful of her weeben.
Very happy to have her.
Yeah, well, they're lucky to have her too. All right. Thanks, Mark. All right, moving on to item number six is employee appreciation and I see Janet back there and.
We can meet in the middle here, Janet. Middle there or middle here? Well, we'll do it here.
I know how much you love being on camera.
We disconnected that.
Janet, I just want to recognize you for twenty wonderful years for the town of Carbondale. And I'm happy and proud to say that I knew you back before you came to the town of Carbondale. So I knew the expertise and experience you had coming here. And I think you brought, you've brought amazing dedication and patience with our community. And now that we're on the, you know, our new, as well as many accomplishments, not only the day-to-day grind of approving and considering projects, but our GIS map and our comprehensive plan and now an update to our comprehensive plan and many other things. We owe it to you and I think we've been lucky to have your service for twenty years and we'll be lucky to have more. So I just wanted to say thank you and congratulations and we'll do the COVID fist bump.
Fred is on.
Okay, Fred, I'll look at you this way. Fred, you've been with us since nineteen ninety-six, twenty-five years. I think that may be the longest standing employee for the town of Carbondale. So thank you. Fred worked for our wastewater department and most people don't know, but I don't know, ten or fifteen years ago, engineers came in and said, well, you need a new wastewater treatment plant, which would have all cost us a lot of money. But thanks to many reasons, but not least of which is a dedicated staff who maintains the treatment plant very well. We were able to keep our existing plant running, which is pretty amazing. And it's an unsung hero job to work at the wastewater treatment plant because nobody sees you. But the fact that we rarely talk about it, we almost never talk about the operations there is, is, is a tribute to our staff. So Fred, thank you for all you do. And there's a card here in appreciation. So thank you.
Say anything, Fred?
Oh, yeah, I didn't, I didn't give Janet, Fred or Janet was. Sorry. I kind of assumed that, but.
Okay. Moving on to item number seven is a public hearing for the new, for a new liquor license for Plaskies. The application is David Eisenson. The location is twelve oh one Main Street. So.
Yeah, you can grab a chair.
Yeah. You can just pull that mic down since I haven't pulled it up.
Sure.
Give me a second to get back to where I need to get to. Welcome, guys. Thanks for coming.
Thank you. Thanks for having us.
We ask you to recite our liquor code, so if you're ready to do that.
We'll work on backwards, Fred.
No, but Kathy, any introduction?
Not really. They're pretty well-versed in the restaurant business and they've been hard at work creating their new deli at twelve oh one Main Street, which is in the roundabout. So the application's complete and that's all I have.
All right. Thanks for joining us, guys. Any questions about what we ask you to do with your liquor license?
Nope.
Okay.
Nothing in particular.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great.
Pretty straightforward on that one. We've both operated several restaurants in the past, so.
Awesome.
Pretty well familiar with that and, you know, making sure everyone has the proper training and responsibilities and everybody knows their responsibilities.
Excellent. Well, we do take it seriously, so we're, we're glad you have experience and look forward to you going by the book. Any questions of the applicant?
No.
All right. Feel free to share with, you're on YouTube and Zoom. Would you like to share anything about your new restaurant?
Yeah, we, you know, I think at this point, a lot of people in town are at least familiar with the concept that we may eventually. with the concept that we may eventually have this, this New York-style Jew-ish deli coming soon. Hence the soon-ish decal on our windows. It's been in the works for a long time. You know, we started talking with Riley and Jack. I know the board is familiar with, two years ago. And, you know, we're thrilled to say that we're about halfway through the construction process at this point. And very, very excited to ply our trade in this town. You know, as an East Coast transplant, it's something that I've always felt was missing in Carbondale. And as much as I love this town, I really love sandwiches. And a really good bagel, like Lox Bagel. So, so we're excited. You know, we were talking about a mid-February opening, tentatively. We are dealing with the same supply chain crunches that everybody else is dealing with now. So we're sort of navigating, trying to navigate that as best we can. You know, it's looking like it may, March may be more realistic. But when it does open, we'll be serving great bagels and great sandwiches. And we're excited to do that.
Great. All right. Look forward to it. It is a public hearing, so we will open it up to the public and see if there's anyone in the audience, either Zoom or in person, who would wish to address the board on this issue, this liquor license. Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion and bring it back to the board for any final questions or a motion.
I have one quick question for staff. The type of license is hotel/restaurant, right? Could you refresh me on what that actually means?
Sure. It means that you can get like a full meal there.
Oh, got it. Okay.
So, yeah, there's not many choices. There's a tavern, which they just have to give you peanuts, supply peanuts. Brewery, so that was the best fit is that you, most of their, I think their revenue will come from food as opposed to, I don't really consider it a big drinking spot.
Closes at six.
Yeah.
So it's unlikely to be.
So if most of your revenue comes from food, you get an HR.
Okay. Thank you.
Want to follow that up with a motion?
I'll move to approve the liquor license for Plaskies Deli located at whatever it was. 1201 Main Street.
Great. Motion by Lonnie, seconded by Marty. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those say no? Motion passes. Congratulations, guys.
Thank you.
Good luck on getting that stuff delivered.
Still waiting for that first call, dude, guys.
If anyone's around, we have a chamber event tomorrow night, a business after hours at the roadside gallery. So if anyone's a chamber member, please stop by and you can get your fostrami on ride tomorrow night.
Oh, nice.
Okay, nice.
All right. Come on up, Renee. On item number eight is a public hearing for the adoption of our 2021 budget. And it's not just adopting a budget. There are several actions. So we will take seven different actions. Item A is the budget. Item B is the 2021 projected fund balances. Item C is approval of community requests. Item D is a resolution number 10, series of 2021, summarizing expenditures and revenues and adopting a 2021 budget. Item E is ordinance number nine, series of 2021, appropriating sums of money to be, to the various funds and spending agencies. Item F is resolution number 11, series of 2021, levying the general property taxes for 2020. And finally, item G is ordinance number 10, series of 2021, appropriating additional sums of money to defray expenses in excess of amount budgeted. Lot of work over the last month, few months, Renee.
The board has worked very hard to reach this point.
Not quite as hard as staff, I would say.
Bill County was calling today to make sure that we get everything approved so that they can have their certification on property taxes tomorrow.
Great. Everybody get that?
So they're pushing.
All right. Take it away.
All right. So biggest changes or biggest highlights that we have for the 2022 budget. 3% to 5% increase on wages, depending on their level. Two new positions, one in the general fund and one in utilities. The Family and Youth Advisory Committee funding and possibly the Hope Center if they don't get a grant. We have the Thompson House Grant for next year. Hopefully, we can get that back online. And a large transfer to the Carbondale Housing Fund. Not to mention a large transfer to the Capital Construction Fund also. We have a few large projects going on next year. The purchase that will expand the Public Works Property, the Eighth Street Project, cybersecurity in the utilities, which is being funded by the American Recovery Plan Act, the Nettle Creek Hydro Project, and the Crystal River Restoration Project. Those are your major items that'll be going on next year. Even with some of those projects and the transfers, you are still maintaining your fund balance at approximately 65%, which is amazing, but that shows the prudence that you have had over the past few years in putting money into your fund balance so that we can do that. Any questions for your overall 2022 budget?
No, not for me. Thank you.
And for the public, we've had likely five, six, seven meetings on this. So please don't think we don't have any questions on the budget. We've just been asking them over the last several months repeatedly. But Ben, did you have?
I mean, maybe a couple minor ones. Just, you know, on our reserves, Renee, we are going down to 65, which you said is quite prudent, which is, I agree. That's a healthy reserve. A few years ago, we always went for 75% and then it's sort of gradually gone down. I'm just curious what the board's feelings are and Renee and Kevin and anybody about where we go from here, like whether we see this as a one-time thing where we're dipping in for these critical projects? And then are we trying to maintain it at 65? Are we trying to build it back up, which would mean, those are hard decisions, right? Then that means next year, instead of doing some big project, we'd say we're putting it into reserve. Is this sort of our departure from the 75% line in the sand? And I don't have a strong position on that. I just thought for a brief moment so that we can recall this in the future, we might discuss then.
Renee, isn't it fair to say, though, that in calculating that 65%, that includes the purchase of that property? And so if you pull out that, the purchase of that property, the percentage is closer.
Okay. That's a really good point. Because that's a $1.3 million part of a budget. Okay.
And put your fund balance right back up to where you want it to be.
Okay. Well, maybe that settles my question.
Well, I mean, for perspective, I think we, please don't quote me on this, but I think we ran the numbers. It's not just the expenditure of the 1.3 million. If we didn't do that, we wouldn't have the expenditure and we would have 1.3 million more in reserves. And I think that would leave us close to 85%.
Okay.
So basically, what it sounds like is that we kind of interchange liquidity for capital asset, right? And they're both in the positive. So I really don't have a problem with it myself. I think we've chosen very wisely based on opportunities presented and our needs, really, meeting the needs prudently, that we've made the right decision. So I'm okay with it. If we have to hang at 65% liquidity for a bit, then that's still solid, in my opinion. And then we can build back better, whatever, down the road.
I don't think that, from a staff perspective, this was ever approached as some deviation from the stated goal of 75%. It's just part of the reason you have that is so you can take opportunities when they present themselves.
Absolutely.
Is your mic on, Kevin?
Yeah, but it's over here and I'm looking this way.
Yeah. I would just say, the 75%, we've been very prudent over the time we've been here. And it enables us to take advantage of opportunities. We've also come through COVID exceedingly well compared to many other municipalities because we've tried to maintain good, you know, fiscal responsibility. We're not being foolish with our money. I think everyone on this board kind of treats the town's money like they would their own. You know, they try to keep a reasonable reserve. And sometimes it's like, if your car breaks down, you have to get a new car. It's nice to have that reserve. The opportunity presents itself, as it has on a couple of occasions, to purchase land, which there's a fixed quantity in town. It's nice that we have the opportunity to take advantage of it. Not all boards in the past have had that ability or have chosen to. So when we pay a little bit more for a property today that could have been bought four or five years ago at a cheaper price, I think we jump on it when we can. And that gives us the leeway to do that as well.
Thanks, Marty. Any other questions?
Just on, and I know Renee, I've answered about this a bunch of times, but the tobacco tax, and it says in the expenditures kind of highlights there, $300,000 for tobacco tax programs under the MOU with Family and Youth Advisory Committee. My understanding is we, in the MOU, it's a lower number than that. It's 200, maybe something like that.
It was like 250. That's one of those items that they need to bring it forward to you to be approved.
So we've got it sitting there, but we haven't actually committed in this budget to giving them that much. Okay. Because I'm going to keep looking at that.
The other flip side of that is the Hope Center may not get that grant.
Right. I feel like the Hope Center and then that work with the Family and Youth Advisory Committee, as well as potentially, what we'll discuss later, with some funding going to health and wellness, you know, with the pool. I just want to make sure we haven't overcommitted. Okay. That's all I had. Thanks.
Thanks, Ben. I figure we'll just act on all these at the end, I suppose, so.
Anyone want to ask any questions about the supplemental budget? We've discussed that prior to and you had highlights in your packet. I just wanted to make sure that there were no questions on that. Basically, what that is, is we cannot spend more money than we budgeted. So we estimate what this year, 2021, is going to be for our expenditures. And if we are going to be over that, either we have revenue come in or we're using some of our fund balances to cover those expenditures. The largest one was the federal money that came in, the $866,000. So we need to make sure and do the supplement on that. Otherwise, the state does write up a reprimand for me. I don't like those.
And what was the trash fund expenditure there on the supplemental?
Basically, charges that, your overflow fees and stuff that were.
But it's just the pass-through, right?
It's more of a pass-through, yeah. But like I said, if we spend the money, we have to have it allocated in the budget.
I have noticed those overage fees going down, which has been really good.
And I have been pointing those out in the AP.
Yeah.
And they have come down drastically.
Yeah, please keep doing that because that's the one I look for every time. So I notice that.
Thank you, Dan.
Yeah.
What's from you, Renee, on the supplemental budget that you might be a little concerned about or not really? No. Okay. Thank you.
As a board and as a staff, everybody's very, very careful when they spend money and how they spend it.
And just before we take action, Kevin, are you planning to update your budget summary that's on the website right now? If it needs updating or if the numbers have changed?
What I was, I hadn't really considered that. I was kind of hoping that folks would actually dive into the budget, read the, you know, the first few pages. I think it has a lot of similar information. But I can take a look at it.
Either way, though, folks will be able to access the budget and possibly the summary from our website, right?
Right. I will go ahead and get the whole budget book put together and that will be on our side. Plus, hopefully, we can get all the information into the GOV software that we purchased. So the budget will go into that and that's an interactive software program that we'll be using.
All right. That's exciting. Okay, so this is a public hearing. And as I mentioned, we have several different actions. My guess is if there are comments, it's about the budget, not all these other things. But I will open up for public comment, either in person or Zoom. So if you'd like to make a comment on our 2022 budget or any of the associated resolutions and ordinances, please either come to the podium or raise your Zoom hand. Okay. Seeing none? Oh, there we go. Pat, we see you. Kevin is... Sets you up, so hopefully you should be good to go. You know the drill. Three minutes. Just give us your name and where you're from.
Patrick Hunter. So, Tank. Had a question on the allocation for the Climate Action Plan. I believe the sum is $25,000. Would that be right?
Yeah, for that particular line item, we spend other money in different areas, but that's right.
And I was just curious what that $25,000 was intended to accomplish.
It essentially, think of that as consulting service fees for Clear to manage that process, you know, to manage that project, if you will, for the year.
So that would be about maybe less than the salary of one professional?
Definitely.
Yeah. Yeah. Is there any thought that maybe we should be looking at higher figures for accomplishing what the goals of the Climate Action Plan?
You know, Pat, I want to entertain your questions. Usually, we don't get into it. But what I will say is we've had work sessions about every component of our budget, starting probably in September. And so we've had those discussions in the past. That's not to say the board can't reconsider it right now. I just, I just would say, yes, we did consider that. But this is the budget we have agreed upon.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Any other comments? And I'll close the public hearing for adoption of our 2021 budget, 2022 budget, excuse me, and bring it back to the board. Starting on page 93 is the first... Well, I want to make sure. If we start with, do we have to specifically approve? Mark or Renee, are we adopting the budget in general and then we act on items D, E, F, and G?
I think the motions on each of the documents take care of it. Do you disagree?
Yeah.
So just D, E, F, and G? Starting with Resolution 10?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So... Would, I had entertain a motion approving Resolution Number 10, series of 2021, summarizing expenditures and revenues and adopting a 2021 budget.
I'm looking for it.
Page 93.
I mean, I'm there. I can just say so moved, right? Because you just read it? Because it says the exact same thing.
Second, then.
Motion by Ben, seconded by Lonnie. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no? Okay. Next, I'd entertain a motion to approve ordinance number nine, series of 2021, appropriating sums of money to the various funds and spending agencies.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Ben, seconded by Lonnie. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no? Motion passes. Item number F on page 97, I'd entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 11, series of 2021, levying general property taxes for 2020.
2021. So moved.
For 20...
Second.
Yeah, because that's the supplemental, right? That's, yeah, because that's the supplemental, right? It says on this page, resolution leveling general property taxes for the year twenty twenty-one.
That is correct.
To defray the costs of government for the town for the year twenty twenty-two.
Sorry, I was reading off the agenda. So that's my bad.
That's good. So that's my motion.
So motion by Ben?
Second.
Seconded by Lonnie. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no? Motion passes. And finally, item, uh, G on page ninety-nine, order, I, I would entertain a motion to approve ordinance number ten, series of twenty twenty-one, appropriating additional sums of money to defray expenses in excess of amount budgeted.
So move.
Motion by Ben, seconded by Lonnie. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed, say no?
Aye.
That was an aye, right, Heather?
That was an aye.
All right. Okay. Renee, nice, nicely done. Kevin, thank you for your work too and onward and upward in twenty twenty-two.
Could I add one quick comment?
Well, Pat Hunter's still on the, the line there, um, to his comment that if there was a specific project that the Environmental Board, which he sits on, wanted us to tackle in a future year and spend some revenue on in order to accomplish one of the goals in our Climate Action Plan, that's exactly the kind of thing that we'd love to hear from the Environmental Board is work through that, bring up a proposal early enough in the year that we can work it into our budget. So at the very final hearing after four months of working on this, we're not going to change that. We have no idea. If we put an extra fifty thousand in dollars in there, what will we do with it? But that'd be a great, uh, thing to work toward if members of the Environmental Board feel that, um, we're not spending enough to accomplish the goals of our Climate Action Plan. Show us some concrete ways to move forward and we'll entertain that in next year's budget.
Thank you, Ben. Okay.
Thank you, Renee.
Yeah, thank you very much. Moving on to item number nine is a special event liquor license for Katie and Kay, New Year's Eve party. Welcome.
Be here. Glad to make it in person.
All right. Um, I want to say Andrew?
Anderson.
Anderson. Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, I knew that. Thanks for coming out. Uh, anything you want to, well, Kathy, I'll let you open up. Anything you want to preface on this one?
No, I'm, I'm happy that you're ending it at eleven fifty because nothing good happens after midnight. And, um, you know, it's, they have, you know, I think that Colin's been pretty thorough talking with Anderson about noise levels over there. Cause in the past, when PAC three was over there, there was a lot of complaints about noise and now they have windows rather than the walls and it gets hot and you open up the doors. So they just need to be really careful not to upset the neighbors. It sounds like a great event. I mean, people want to celebrate again. So I think a lot of people will be happy to have this event.
Thank you, Kathy. And Anderson, feel free to tell the viewing public about your event.
Yeah, absolutely. It's gonna be a New Year's bash, uh, New Year's Eve bash, I should say, and, uh, we're gonna have the six million dollar band there. It's an eighties experience band. So I know some folks still wish we were in the eighties and we were celebrating going into nineteen eighty-nine, but we're actually going into twenty twenty-two. But we will dance like it is in the eighties. Um, uh, the tickets are a hundred dollars, but that ticket includes food from Slow Groovin', uh, the, the first drink. If all goes well for the, with the rest of this presentation, um, and, uh, the best dance party of your life. We are, uh, requiring proof of vaccination to get into, um, the party. Um, and it should be a great night.
Awesome. Any questions, Anderson?
Proof of vaccination or negative COVID test?
Uh, proof of vaccination only. So the actual card.
Okay, thank you. Good job.
All right. Um, well, this is not a public hearing, so I will, uh, I would entertain a motion to approve this special event liquor license for Katie and Kay.
Make a motion to approve the special event. Liquor license for Katie and Kay's New Year's Eve batch at Third Street.
Second? All right. We have a motion by Marty, seconded by Luis. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed, say no? Motion passes. Congratulations, Anderson, and, uh, good luck.
Great. Thank you so much.
Good luck with the labor love auction too.
Oh, that's over.
Oh, did it end?
It, it did end, but we're having a leftover love auction as well for everything.
Funny. Okay. How's everybody feeling? That our next agenda item is due to be about forty-five minutes. Do we want to break or can we power through that? We will move forward. I see Catherine here, so, um, we can move ahead with item number ten is a Clear update. This is our annual sort of check-in with Clear to say, here's what they've done and here's what they're planning in twenty twenty-two. Oh, and there's my aside. And the gentleman I don't know.
This is Zach.
Hi, Zach.
So how do we log into the Zoom to the chat screen?
I'm actually in the Zoom right now.
You are?
I'm not a panelist. Yeah. Could you?
Buddy, this is my first time.
There, Kevin.
Thirty-four days.
Yeah. Have you been outside his office? Is the countdown calendar? Transparent.
Should be able to show your screen now.
Sorry, guys. I should have opened the presentation before. This is the taking the break.
Okay. That's what we're waiting on? It's just a presentation to open?
Yeah.
Okay. No pressure. Look at that.
Okay, now you want to go to presentive here? Oh, we did it.
Good job.
It's fine. Okay. Yeah, there we go. All right, it's okay. Okay, so, um, we're here to give you a little update on the work that Clear, um, achieved in twenty twenty-one. Just as a quick reminder, um, we, uh, can have two contracts and so we're going to talk about it in two sets of work. We tried to really put a lot of comprehensive information in your packet, so we're not going to, um, touch on all of it. We're just going to highlight a couple of things that we wanted to have a little bit more discussion about. And then we really want to focus the conversation about, um, you know, ideas to, how do we build on what we've done to date? What do we want to do next year and, and make further progress? So some of the focus areas, um, in, in the contract were around, you know, energy and building codes, um, communications, the comp plan update and our, and Clear's engagement on that. There's an update in your packet about the net zero energy district and then also there was a lot of coordination with the E-board. And so, and we'll talk about some of that, um, in a little bit. But one of the things we really wanted to kind of highlight was the work we did with Cushing Terrell on the comprehensive plan update, because what isn't in your packet about that was really, you know, more information about the climate event, the attendance, and, you know, this opportunity that we, um, created to just have the community give a lot more input about, you know, their concerns around climate protection. So we had, um, these seven focus areas and we started out doing presentations on everything that had been done to date in the town on these seven focus areas. And then we had, um, stations where all of the participants, including online participants actually, could make comments on, um, what they thought the goal should be, uh, other ideas of what we should be doing in each of these focus areas. Strategies they thought the town should be undertaking. So, uh, we collected, I think it was a hundred and eighty-two comments across the seven focus areas. And then Zach really went through all of these comments and kind of coded them so that we could pull out what are the main themes? What are the main concerns we're hearing from the community members of Carbondale? Um, and then just to really, I mean, obviously we have these seven areas, but really just focusing in on the, the energy buckets. We can see that the community is really, uh, engaged in the idea of shifting to a hundred percent renewable energy, eliminating natural gas use and, uh, and then adding storage systems to, to buildings for energy resilience. And then in, in energy use in buildings, um, they want to see all new buildings being fully electric. They want to see us phasing out natural gas in existing buildings and obviously, you know, continue to increase our energy efficiency in the built environment. With the transportation piece, uh, a lot of it was about, you know, the multimodal kind of, um, accessibility to the circulator. Um, we had lots of comments about, you know, kind of last mile on the car share. I don't think this means that the community isn't engaged in the idea of EVs. I think this, these comments came about because we gave such a good, um, presentation on what is happening regionally on EVs, um, and EV infrastructure and, and that's still a priority of the town to continue to encourage EV infrastructure. So, um, how, yes, having collected all of this information. Uh, we provide all this information to Cushing Terrell. I know that Cushing Terrell have been coming and giving you updates and that the, the climate aspects of that have been one part of that update. I think the key way that we incorporate some of these concerns from our community into the comprehensive plan is to really look at like, what is the overall framework? And so right now, the two thousand thirteen framework is based around community ecology and economy. And I think that, you know, suggesting this more kind of sustainable future framework of climate protection, resilience and equity, it still includes community ecology and economy, but it's a little broader and allows us then to pull in all of these strategies we're hearing that a town want around a hundred percent renewables, getting off natural gas, energy efficiency in buildings, EV infrastructure, et cetera. And so, uh, you know, this, what Cushing Terrell have been, um, recommending, um, really, you know, is about coming from a point of climate protection so that our built environment is considering that, doing it in a way that, um, helps our community continue to be resilient. And that's, you know, resilient economy, resilient in energy, our ability to survive anything that comes our way. And then doing it in a way that really is, you know, providing equal access to all the opportunities of living here to everybody in our community, regardless of race or gender or age or, um, income level. Um, and so I think that that, those are kind of like the, the key ways and the key takeaways in terms of the work we did with Cushing Terrell and collecting information and trying to, you know, make suggestions and recommendations for the update to the comprehensive plan. So, um, there was a lot of other work we did in that contract. You have it all in the packet. We are happy to answer any questions or have any discussion about any of those topics. So we could do that now. Or if there aren't questions now, we can move on to the work we've done with, uh, the E-board this year and the Climate Action Plan.
Any questions on the comp plan work?
Did that meeting, um, and I thought it was the, the presentations at the beginning summarizing all the things that we as a town and you as our, you know, consultants and, and assistants or whatever you want to say, partners in all this, um, was really incredible. And I think, um, Catherine's right that that set the stage for people to talk about what's next instead of not really knowing what all is going on. And it's really incredible when you have a series of speakers each with three minutes talk about what we're doing on each of those major topics. Um, doing a lot.
Yeah.
It, it's hard to imagine a town of seven thousand people, um, with, with our budget and resources and all that kind of stuff doing much more. So it doesn't make us complacent, but I think we should be proud of the progress that we've made and the leadership positions that we've taken and then we just keep going. But I really appreciated that meeting and thought that that was really a great part of it.
Thanks, Ben.
Yep. And one last thing I'd like to mention, even though Clear as an organization is focused on the energy related pieces, the other four topic areas of waste, food and agriculture, um, water in the V caps and trees and vegetation are equally as important. And this kind of comprehensive plan structure also will allow us to, you know, address all of those concerns too. So just so everyone knows, we're not ignoring those aspects.
Nice.
So then, um, work on the, uh, the Climate Action Plan. So we had worked with the E-board to really come up with, you know, a series of steps that they felt like we should be taking to move forward. We, uh, we tried to do some outreach to large buildings, um, and we, we put some information in the packet about how that went, what we did achieve, what we weren't able to achieve. We really focused on really collecting the data we need. Uh, we often talk about like, what should we be doing? What is our biggest bank of the buck? How are we doing? Are we like on track to meet our goals? So we, so Zach collected a lot of data. He's put together a lot of information on, on our progress. We, uh, we updated the tracker so that we could see where we are on, um, actually taking the actions in the Climate Action Plan. So I think the E-board now have, uh, a better understanding of what's been done and so that they can then now work towards like, okay, what should we be doing next and make some suggestions as to, you know, what we should be doing in twenty twenty-two. Um, and so I think I'd like to hand it over to Zach to really talk about, um, the data and have a quick look at where do we stand as a community? Are we making progress and what we should do next to really develop these annual goals and make more progress?
All right. Thanks, Catherine. So just going to share some progress to date and then a forecast that we created that goes up to twenty fifty, which is our net zero community goal. So these two graphs here, on the left, you have electricity use and on the right, there's natural gas use over time. These are within our last four inventories for the town. And the green line there is total heating and cooling degree days. So maybe times you'd use more energy if it was higher. Um, as we can see in that left graph, electricity has stayed pretty consistent over the last ten years. While natural gas usage has fallen a little bit more, twenty twenty might become an anomaly, given that it was COVID, businesses were shut down. It was also a warmer year, um, less heating and cooling days. When you go to the next slide. Then, so this is our historical emissions for the whole town, um, broken out into different kind of sectors. Um, so as we can see here, that the, that it's fallen since twenty two thousand nine by around twenty-six percent, which is a pretty big decrease as a community. And this is just building emissions. So just from our built environment. Our biggest decreases have really been in the residential electricity sector and the commercial electricity sector. And that has really been coming from, um, the greening of the grid by the utility companies, uh, which has been a really big, big thing that they're doing, um, is really helping us meet our goals of net zero. But that should also, um, not miss that there's been lots of electrification, um, new building codes that have helped new buildings be much more energy efficient. Um, and then just continue to work with community members to find rebates to improve their buildings. Next slide. Then we also looked at just municipal buildings. Um, so this is a really interesting graph where we have electricity in the green and natural gas in the maroon. Um, as you can see in twenty twenty, all the electricity emissions, um, have gone away. Um, that's because we purchased offsets essentially or electricity credits, um, which has been really great for municipal buildings. Um, and this really shows that natural gas is kind of the one remaining factor in the emissions from the municipal buildings. Um, and we have breakouts per building that we're going to share with all the different departments and help them see their emissions over time. Um, and we can share those with you tonight if you would like to look at those at the end of this. Excellent. Then this is our emission reduction schedule. I think this is one of the coolest, um, graphs that I put together here. So it's in these like red reddish bars, um, that's total emissions over time. And then the green line is kind of where we need to be each year to meet that twenty fifty goal of being net zero by twenty fifty.
Zach, why are there two lines for twenty nineteen?
So twenty twenty is right next to it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Sorry, the legend doesn't clear the, the axis doesn't quite have them all, but it's twenty nineteen and then twenty twenty right next to it. Um, and so as we can see in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, we're below that green line, um, which shows that our community is ahead of schedule essentially in terms of meeting that twenty thirty and then twenty fifty goal. Um, and then that table there is describing the emission reduction we're going to need per year. So starting in 2022, we're going to need a 2.4% reduction in total emissions off of the 2009 baseline of building emissions. And then once we hit 2030, we're going to need a 2.5% reduction per year. Next slide.
I don't know if this is an apples to apples comparison, but I recently heard that as a country, we need to be doing eight or nine percent per year. And so that tells me that not only, like you said, are we making good progress, but we started from a good place. So we're ahead of the game, which is great.
I would also add, though, that this is only accounting for the built environments, it's just buildings.
That's true. Thank you.
If you don't factor transportation, agriculture. So then this is our, one of the forecasts that we produced. We we've created three different forecasts, which are in your packet in the attachment. But this is kind of the most likely one. This is the state prediction for Garfield County. Using state predictions for population growth and job growth to both model residential growth and then commercial growth. And then that dotted line that goes across the middle of that graph on the left is our 2030 goal of reducing emissions by 20, by 50% by 2030. And so as we can see here, in 2030, we'll be slightly above if we take no more action. And then in 2050, we'll be significantly above zero emissions. But what you can, what I think is really cool is to see that commercial electricity and residential electricity, those emissions go to zero by 2050 because both XL and Holy Cross have strong commitments to be 100% net zero by 2050. So really, the remaining emissions will be coming from natural gas in our community. And the final slide. And then the last thing that we discussed with the E-Board and we hope to discuss with you all a little bit is we want to go into the cap at some point and really prioritize what are the strategies that we want to take to really meet that 2050 goal of 100% carbon free. So we've looked at a number of other communities to kind of get an idea of how did they really rank their strategies in terms of reducing emissions. The three most common things are greenhouse gas reduction potential for different strategies, the cost of the strategy, and then co-benefits that strategy will produce. So this figure here is from the city of Lakewood and it both shows upfront cost as one of their main factors in measuring different strategies and then different community benefits, which I think that's a key part, the the E-Board and you all can be really a part of kind of collaboratively determining what are the co-benefits that we want to kind of prioritize our strategies based on. And then we also have greenhouse gas reduction potential in terms of how much will this actually affect the greenhouse gas reductions.
Thank you, Zach. So yeah, as you guys can see, we had a really busy year, got a lot done. But we would like to propose some ideas for next year's contract for 2022. So under the cap work plan, we're thinking of prioritizing the greenhouse gas reduction strategies in the cap like Zach just mentioned and update the forecast scenario so we can make sure we're on track to meet our climate goals. And one of the tactics in our cap is to designate this carbon neutral net zero district, do a neighborhood makeover and this eco block concept, which we included the description in the memo, could be something we could explore for next year and see if there is a a maybe a complex of a multi-family building that is willing to voluntarily go into this program and do all sorts of upgrades in their building. And I have reached out to the E-Board asking for their ideas. So I am collecting them. Hopefully, we'll work with the group on putting this scope of work together for 2022. And the question is, how do we make further progress, right? So incorporating the framework of the the climate protection in the comp plan and also making sure we're making some updates in the UDC to make sure the climate protection is definitely included and lead by example. So commit the town buildings to electrify, get rid of natural gas as fast as we can and consider progressive codes for existing buildings. Catherine put a great report together in the packet and, you know, addressing benchmarking performance standards and existing building code development and implementation. That's definitely something we would like to continue working on in 2022. Is there some of our ideas? But we would love to hear from all of you if you have any ideas on what we should be focusing on.
Thank you, Maesha, Catherine and Zach. Questions, thoughts?
Thoughts is that this is one heck of a lot of work. So thank you very much for doing that for us and for the environment more so.
Yeah, I think only in Carbondale can we look at a presentation where our emissions are not only going down, but they're sort of slightly ahead of our trajectory. And that we did so, and and you've given presentations in the past to demonstrate the clean energy economy that really has been created. So we're doing this while creating a vibrant economy and probably making our housing more affordable given the the work in weatherization and thing in and renewable energy. So I guess only in Carbondale can we just sort of be nonchalant about, yeah, look what we're doing. So this is really amazing work and nice job. I think it's it's really quite impressive.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you for this. And I think one of the most important things that you're doing with us is taking the Climate Action Plan and making it measurable and making it have a a clear path from here to our goal, which I think it didn't have before, right? I mean, I think it was only a year or two ago that we were saying it's got all these ideas in it, but how do we prioritize and how do we put in sort of a stair step program where we're ratcheting down over time. And so I fully support the work plan of prioritizing those with the kind of metrics that Zach was referring to and I really like all the the data that you've used to really show what we're doing. You know, the one place where I I don't want to pat ourselves on the back too much is the fact that the main reduction in some of that is from, as Zach said, from the utilities. And that at that comp plan meeting, I remember standing there, I think you were with me, looking at that graph for a long time going, wait, what what's really behind this? You know, we haven't really decreased our usage that much, although some with electrification and all that. It's that the utilities are decreasing the carbon intensity of their, the electricity that we're using. But, you know, we're all part of that and we've all supported people at the state level who've made those things happen and voted on initiatives and all that. So I think we can be proud of that. It does seem like, I mean, even a couple of years ago, Dan, you were starting to talk about natural gas being the next focus area. And now that seems just abundantly clear from this that the utilities are going to help us get to zero or pretty close on electricity. But the natural gas, especially in existing buildings, is going to be a really tough one. And so I really like this idea of the net zero energy district keeping moving. I felt like we gave that life a few years ago and, you know, did an initial sort of effort and you guys did a lot of work around the Third Street Center and on Second Street and all that. But it seems like at some point, there's a big gap that we have to bridge that's old private privately owned residential units upgrading very expensive heating systems, right? I mean, that's really what we're talking about. And I don't know how we do that, but I'm interested in whatever you can do to help us start to think through that. So I really appreciate the work that you've done and the work that you're going to do. And I I don't have anything. I'm not as smart as you guys are on all this stuff, so I'm not going to suggest any other ways to go about this, but I think that it's it's all on track.
And I've I've been noticing a lot of media coverage, media push from the utilities on their move towards going more, you know, clean energy resources and so forth. And I wonder if you have any connection with those individuals that you can perhaps get some insight from or influence into what their thoughts are.
Are you talking about specific individuals that work for utility companies? I mean, we certainly have connections with lots of different people working for both Holy Cross and XL Energy that we
Right, on a on a national level. So those individuals who put these advertisements on television and so forth, it seems to be a lot more visible evidence of, well, at least presentation of their intentions of going more natural, right? Renewable versus fossil fuels. And I just wonder if you have any insights into those or influence or connections with with the media that represent those entities. That would be interesting.
I think we're strongly focused on what we can do in this region, what we can do that like, you know, helps meet Colorado state goals and how we're connected within the entire Western region electricity system. I think when you talk national, there's a lot of different approaches needed nationally because we have lots of different fragmented electricity grids. You know, some of the strategies, a lot of the strategies are the same, but I don't know that we have connections with people doing national media. That's not really our focus is regional, state, the Western interconnection electricity grid.
Right. Well, that's good. Yeah, you have a lot of influence, I will say, that you might leverage at some point.
Other questions, Kevin? Patrick. Pat, you're muted.
Got it. I was just listening to those last comments about the ads. I'd be very careful with those ads. I'm not sure that that's 100% accurate, but I also wanted say that I think I agree with 100% of what Ben just said. Like that was a perfect analysis and I'm as one who has been active, you know, in the E-Board for a number of years, I'm really enthusiastically supporting what's going on now at Clear and bringing together the data that Ben mentioned so that we can really analyze where it is we can get the best results. And I think you guys are right to say that tackling the buildings in the community is going to be tough and but it's something we have to focus on and figure out a way to make happen. So thank you.
All right, I might share some thoughts. I I'm excited because I think between the comp plan and and the your update and the work plan, we're really starting to put together. Well, it's been there, the roadmap, but even, you know, pulling these things together for the comp plan. And I think the timing of the comp plan update is is awesome. And I think just as we hear developers and others always cite our comp plan, I see that as the opportunity for us to infuse, you know, climate protection, resiliency and equity into the discussion of that's that's a a clear priority. So to me and selfishly, since I'll only be on the board for a few more months, really seeing how that can be incorporated effectively into the comp plan is really important. I think there are some things that fall under those categories, like you've mentioned water, Catherine, that falls outside of clear scope and therefore this discussion. But that's important. Likewise, we mentioned the first and last mile and and Rafta. Rafta is really trying to take a comprehensive responsibility for community emissions as much as it can, so then we can focus on on some other more local things. But I think for me personally, while weaning ourselves off of natural gas isn't the only thing we need to do, I think it's a clear priority and focus for the comprehensive plan to give anyone wanting to develop in Carbondale that guidance that this is a a clear priority. Doesn't mean you have to. You know, we're not proposing that we stop, we prohibit natural gas tomorrow, but that that is a target. And I think it's a target because it's pretty darn hard to do. We don't have, we're not able to do that tomorrow. And then under that, and you could say gas and petroleum as well, methane, gas and petroleum, that is. So there's the codes of both new and existing buildings. And I think we're assuming that you're just going to come forward with those recommendations. We've been supportive of building codes in the past. I don't think we really need to talk a lot about that. But I think again, as it relates to a comprehensive plan, I suspect we really need to revisit the EV charging component of development. And there's been a little bit of it in the past, but maybe we really need to ramp that up in the comprehensive plan. And then thirdly, so codes, electric vehicles and then renewable energy, which again, we've already done, we've already acted on, but now it's time to step it up even further. I I think it's exciting. I would love for the town to embrace a roadmap similar to what we discussed when we looked at building codes earlier this year, but more of a specific roadmap about gas and when are we willing to commit to not buy gas appliances anymore? When are we willing to commit to not buy natural gas anymore?
As municipal?
As a as a municipal user. And then once we're we're leading by example, then we can look at strengthening codes. But it's all exciting. And I think this work is really going to inform the comprehensive plan. At least I I'm hoping it does. So I I guess that's my input to say really, the the more input that you guys can shepherd to make sure that the comprehensive plan reflects what you guys feel should be our community priorities is is important to me anyway. So. Other questions, Ben?
I just wonder on your, I guess, the last page in the material you gave us for the packet, you've got your initial ideas and there's six bullet points there. And do you need more than you're getting from us as far as prioritizing those? Do you need to strike some of those out and say, we can't do all these? I mean, because I I love all those, but I don't know if we're, if that's a feasible work plan for you.
I think this is great that you brought this up. That is absolutely not a feasible work plan. There is so much we could be doing. These are all ideas of things that these would all be great to do. But there's no way we can do all of this within the budget that we have.
So it sounds like Dan was prioritizing maybe the work on code updates. Is that right? I mean, what what do you feel like you were prioritizing off of this? Or are you adding things to this? I just want to make sure we give them some clear guidance.
Yeah. I I don't know if, and Catherine and I talked about this this morning. I think there's discussion about work that's going into the comp plan and Clear has already worked with Cushing Terrell to make sure. But I think there's some, there's a lot of follow up work that needs to go into making sure that it's it's crafted, it's attending more of these meetings as we as we consider the 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 comp plan. And I think that's really important, even though it's not on one year bullets. You know, I think the the Neighborhood Makeover Program and the the Net Zero Energy, is that all one and the same? I think so. It seemed to be a priority in the past for you guys that 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 really was going to leverage a a lot of ideas and including building electrification, but I I don't know.
So I think, you know, if you recall several years ago, as a as a community, we we had a big community meeting, we had a speaker come to talk about zero energy districts and we all thought, okay, let's give this a go. We didn't know what a zero energy district could be, but we chose a spot in town that we thought, okay, this could work around the Third Street Center. There's some commercial buildings. There's a little residential. Let's take a look at like what that would look like. It was a conceptual idea. We put together a report that really looked at all those buildings and a strategy of how do you move forward? It's really clear how we move forward on the electrical component. We do it with renewables. We do it through the utilities. We're really stuck on the, okay, what do we do now? There's a lot of natural gas use. We don't necessarily have the budget to transfer those systems over to natural gas, you know? It's really, it depends on the school district priorities, the libraries priorities and their and their budgets and also funding mechanisms, which may be coming, you know, we just had this Build Back Better bill pass. So there may be new strategies, new funding coming, but we kind of like, we got stuck. But one thing we realized was, we came from this approach of like, choose an area in town and it includes a residential area. Well, what we are now going with is like, hey, we're going to be more successful. If we can find a group of homeowners, maybe they have similar buildings with, you know, similar systems and they are enthusiastic around making this switch. And maybe we, and this is the eco block concept. Maybe we find, you know, some other residential neighborhood that wants to buy in, that have that enthusiasm. If we don't find that, then I don't think we'll move forward with that idea. So it's not so much that Clear was really enthusiastic to do this. It was more, hey, this was a concept we wanted to explore as a town. Here's what we found so far. Here's why we've not moved ahead. Here's a new thing we could look at and approach if we think that's the way to go. Maybe we want to spend our money on doing something different. That's kind of the discussion right now.
If that's the case, then that's good to know because I thought that that was a priority for you guys. To me, I have my, other than, you know, help with the comprehensive plan and make To me, I have my, other than, you know, help with the comprehensive plan and making sure that's, uh, adopted the way you want it. I see the two most pressing priorities being, um, one, doing whatever the work is to get the industry ready for building electrification. Catherine and I might, might respectfully disagree that there, that the industry is ready for that. And so I think there's probably more work to be done. I don't really know what that looks like, but I think that is a community priority. And then secondly, yes, I want us to pursue codes, but I think it's time to hit the reset button. And I know for me personally, before I would entertain a code discussion, I want to see how we can simplify it. I think there's still a lot of brain damage that goes into meeting our codes and they, and they, and you know, to Catherine's point earlier today, they've resulted in higher performing buildings, but I think we want to create big incentives for either full electrification or net zero and streamline the compliance process. And, and maybe others disagree, but to me, I want the code work, but I want, it's like going from DOS to an app, you know, that co- code compliance right now is still like using DOS and we all are, we all want things to be as easy as an app. And I think it can be, uh, I don't have a good example, but, um, so that's, that's where I am. Other people have thoughts.
I mean, it seems like it's not on the six bullet points here, all the work you mentioned that is going to go into the E-Board, work on the climate action plan and prioritizing those. And that's something you've talked about a lot, like really seeing the, the bang for the buck, kind of the lever, the equation, right? Of if we do this, we reduce it by this much and we, it costs us this much. That seems like a, a top priority. If what we're trying to do right now is give some prioritization to all the things that Clear could potentially do with, as Patrick pointed out, a relatively modest budget that we contribute to this. It seems like the, the climate action plan prioritization is work that you're already committed to and that needs to happen.
What? Give us more feedback, like, based on what you've heard, what do you think the work plan should be?
I think that the cap work plan should be continuing this prioritization and really thinking about like, what strategies should we be taking best bang for the buck? And what are the co-benefits that are community values? And then, but then also I think that, you know, we haven't had input from the E-Board and I would really like to hear what they have to say. And, you know, if they have a different idea of the best way to spend those funds, then I think they should have that input too. In terms of the, the other contracts, I think that it's really, you know, as you said, it's finishing out this comp plan process so that we have this overall framework that's going to lead to development that is going to prioritize all the strategies we're hearing community members say they want us to be taking around renewable energy and electrification and getting off gas. But then that, that then goes down to, let's incorporate some of those big bucket areas into the UDC, including language around EVs, around renewable energy and around maybe electrification. And then, you know, the UDC really then informs what we put together as our, as our building codes. And I think we've done a really good job of using that tool, which is the primary lever a municipality has to make any progress on this issue. And so we've done it in new construction and yet new construction is such a, a much smaller percentage of our energy use in buildings than existing buildings. And so we're really faced with this hard task right now of going, what are we going to do about existing buildings and the emissions in existing buildings? I think that, you know, we have to do it with equity in mind. We can't have blanket mandates that, you know, cause people to have to do things they can't afford to do. We could have an existing building code that says, hey, when you do a remodel, when you're doing alterations, not only do you have to bring your plumbing up to code, your electrical up to code, which is, you know, pretty standard these days, but you also have to come up to a certain energy standard. So I think that's where we are as a community and, and that's also in keeping with where the other communities in the Roaring Fort Valley are, where we are as a state. Um, you know, the state has started to implement building performance standards. So I do think it's worth now exploring, okay, if we were to do this in Carbondale, what would that look like? Um, I think it would be good to spend some of our time next year, really exploring, what could we do? What are our other Roaring Fort Valley communities doing? Do we want to align with that?
Okay. Patrick, is, is your hand up again or is that from your previous comment? You're muted. Or maybe you're not there. Get back to us. Okay. So I'm a little, Catherine, thank you for summarizing that. Do you feel like, again, based on what you've heard, based on what you recommend, recommending, do you feel like you can narrow down a scope or do you, do we need to help you do that right now?
I think that at this point, we need to go away, we take this input, talk to the E-Board and then really think about, okay, here's the budget. What can, what is it feasible to achieve? I think that we've got some good input on what the priorities should be, um, and so that we can put together a realistic scope of work with a limited budget.
Great.
My just add, Dan, just what I, I appreciate your clarification Catherine on kind of the evolution of the net zero district to the eco block concept that it sounds like is out of California. I love that idea because I think what we're all saying is the, the toughest nut to crack here is the existing housing stock and existing, uh, buildings and their energy systems and retrofitting those. And so that's the one thing that starts to address that. And I think in, as we've all, you know, lived at, through the, and are still living through the kind of renewable energy transition, we've seen the power of showing what's possible, right? And of early adopters doing things, whether it's an electric vehicle or a early solar panel, you know, installation or whatever. So I feel like that has that potential for a group, like you said, self-selected, they're investing with you, we're probably helping them with rebates and design and stuff like that, but we're not paying for the systems. Um, I think you'd find some really interested little groups of houses around town. And that probably wouldn't start with our lowest income residents, right? That probably would start with people with the means to, to make some significant remodels, but I bet you'd find some people willing to do it. And then once we showed what's possible and maybe that's then that block by block kind of strategy you mentioned.
And perhaps with that strategy, over time, the cost would go down. That's why I was asking about the advertising, you know, is that effective? Is that something that somebody can relate to, um, just the general public? Because one of the things that, you know, I kind of perceive is that the biggest obstacle are going to be the inconvenience of switching as well as the cost associated with it. You know, people just aren't willing to do that for no benefit. So what's the benefit statement? Um, if the national advertising isn't doing it based on what the utilities can help with, then what can we do here locally, um, to Ben's point and to Dan's point? So, um, you know, the neighborhood block thing is, um, appealing, um, but again, those obstacles will exist, um, I fear. And, you know, that's some outreach that perhaps you can begin with to educate the public on, on what the benefits are and where things are going in terms of the actual true benefit as well as the, uh, over time, the cost reduction as technology improves. So that's kind of where I s- come out on that.
Thanks Lonnie.
Yep.
Last call for questions.
I'm back.
Oh, Patrick, you're back.
Heck. So, uh, I just finished up two classes at Colorado Mountain College and my professor happens to be the new mayor of Vail. And so we had some discussions around this and one of the things that has happened recently is, um, sorry about that, is that, uh, Aspen has taken a very aggressive posture on benchmarking. For example, uh, Ithaca, New York was just in the news. Manhattan, New York City is very aggressive and in particular Seattle is very aggressive. They have a program whereby they have isolated or picked their larger buildings and have set up a policy whereby they must report their energy use year by year. And they must make certain progress on their energy use year by year. So it's mandated. And so the, I think the trend right now is to look at the bigger buildings that would have more budget to do things with, uh, and use those as examples as well as the municipal buildings, being as somebody mentioned here earlier, as a, um, you know, leader in the field to sort of illustrate what can be done and also to set up standard, uh, for the community. So all those things are going on and it means really that you have to, at some point, you have to create an ordinance that says, we will do this. And that's going to be based on all the work that Clear puts together and conversations with everybody else. Thank you.
Thanks, Patrick. All right. Thanks y'all.
Great, thank you.
For all the work and for joining us tonight. All right. It's seven thirty-nine, let's take a seven-minute break, adjourn for seven minutes, come back around a little after seven forty-five.
Hey Richard. How are you? I saw the video from the other day. So a- out of curiosity.
But you know what I mean, right? Yeah. 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 It's on the same page, so.
What's web? Done.
Sponsored because the host facilities were not requiring what the organization leadership wanted in terms of safety.
So, so what you could, so he was, he was definitely.
So you want to buy a mail-in?
No, 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 no. I knew you.
I was just laughing.
He was talking about his.
You rent mail-in, you don't buy them.
He asked me if I used the four three two south third, want to carve it down? Cause he gets mail.
Still on the mailing list. What's his cousin's last name? No, I get letters every, every day. Ask you me for money. Oh, I do. I mean, I just, Nancy Pelosi is texting me. So where is Emory Riddle? I don't know.
I see about what?
Um, where's Emory Riddle? Oh, okay. Oh, okay. That's why she was correcting you about pronunciation. And what made you choose them?
Um, the aeronautical science program and the good air, Air Force RGC. So. And it's also, it's far enough away, so.
You're away from home, but you can still come back once in a while?
Yeah.
Where is it?
Arizona, Prescott.
Prescott.
Prescott, yes.
The climate's pretty nice, isn't it?
Yeah, it's northern Arizona, so in the summer, it's, it's like here-ish. And then they do get some light stuff also.
I think there's some ski resorts within an hour to.
Yeah. Yeah, there's one of the bike staff.
Well, I think we can bring the meeting back to order. Got everybody here and move on to item number eleven, which is resolution number twelve, series of twenty twenty-one, amended appendix A fees. Again, this is sort of housekeeping.
And your mic is off.
Thank you, Heather. Uh, moving on to item eleven, resolution number twelve, series of twenty twenty-one, amended appendix A fees. Uh, this is some housekeeping where we, uh, make any changes to our fee schedule for all things Towne and Carbondale. Kevin or Catherine?
I can take it real quick. It's pretty simple. The only changes that we're proposing tonight are the annual updates to the water and wastewater fees in accordance with the plan that was adopted by the board, two thousand eighteen, I believe. The base fee for water is going up seven point five percent. All the other fees for water and wastewater go up five percent. That continues through twenty twenty-four and then we drop to a three percent across the board.
Okay. Yeah, so just to add on a little bit more, this was part of a five-year strategy to get our water and wastewater rates up to where we felt they should be, but still within, uh, comparable norms. And I, I would opine that not only does this reflect what it costs us to deliver the water, but it also reflects the increasing value of water. And despite. The increasing value of water. Um, and despite this, the last time I checked, which was probably more than a decade ago. Uh, the water we deliver. To a home is still about three hundred times cheaper than what you buy in a, in a bottle. Um, which is pretty amazing. So, um, kudos to our water and wastewater department. Any questions of these fees?
No.
Uh, is there a motion to approve resolution number twelve?
Make a motion to approve resolution number twelve, series of twenty twenty-one.
Second. We have a motion by Marty and a second by Luis. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Sorry, Heather. Oppose say no? All right, motion passes. Um, looks like we have Eric and Hollis here for item number twelve, continued aquatics facility financing discussion. Welcome. Since getting us one step closer.
Yes, thanks. Um, are we on? Thanks, yeah. I, I put together kind of a, a very fairly lengthy memo, so sorry about that, but. We did want to get into some background where, how we got here. Um, we also wanted to do a little bit of a deep dive into the expenditures and revenue of the, our existing. A half-cent recreation sales and use tax fund. To really kind of um take a look at what's been produced by um design workshop in two thousand twenty. Which was a, a aquatics facility master plan that took a pretty good look at um. And with public process, um, at what, what the public really wanted to see um with the new, new pool. And we had done an order of magnitude project cost before that without any publicly vetted process, the, just to take a look. In two thousand fifteen, which I thought was pretty interesting, just to take a look at um what's possible and how much it would cost. At that time, we um were, you know, potentially looking at, you know, having a donor, you know, look at, look at helping us with that project. So we did take a look at. Uh, what that would look like without publicly vetting the process. That came up with an estimated cost of four point three million. Jumped to two thousand twenty with our work with a design workshop, the um. The aquatic plan with the publicly vetted process changed in design quite a bit. Um, than that, that original stab at a, at a new aquatic facility there. So that's why you'll, you'll see a big jump in the, in the cost of the project. Once we went out to the public and, and kind of changed the design in many different ways. One does, uh, design change being we really looked at two bodies of water. And the need for two bodies of water, so it could have in our um space there, it could have two separate activities. Uh, going on at the same time and really satisfying a lot more people at the same time in the same amount of space. With the pretty picture that was produced from that, that master plan, which is in your packet. Uh, we, we put that out to the public um after the, that process was over. And, you know, started to receive more feedback on that. So. One of the uh needs um that we kind of missed in that process was um maximizing, not downsizing. Um, the lap lane potential there. And so, so that's one thing we did with this kind of deep dive into the finances of, of this potential new pool is. We listened to the public there um and did uh look at adding a fourth lane to that design. Um, and seeing what that would cost us. So right now it's designed as a three-lane lap pool. Um, and when we ran our kind of numbers of our lap users this summer. Yeah, it's not enough. It's not enough, enough lanes to satisfy the existing need. So. Um, so that, that's just a little bit of change. I wanted to explain that, why that's in there, so. Um, and then we, we kind of utilizing the numbers from that aquatic facility master plan. Um, and, and trusting those numbers, they, they did a, do a good job, I think, you know, of really looking at uh. They didn't know when we were going to build this, so there's some padding in these numbers, definitely. There's a twenty percent contingency. Um, in these numbers, just due to some of those factors. Um, so that brought us up on that design to about seven million. If we added that fourth lane, gets us up to about seven million, seven point three. Almost seven point four. So that's a little bit of background of where we, where we sit now with the existing design on the table. Um, then in our last meeting with you guys, um, we really looked at financing options. Um, you know, at that level and even at a, at a higher level with Hilltop Securities. Um, we have a pretty good idea that the bond process will be a, a general fund bond utilizing all sales and use tax revenue. That are, don't have restricted use on them at the present time. So knowing that, we also needed to do, where that put us is, we needed to do a deep dive. Into um the expenditures and revenues uh of the existing. Revenue of the, of our recreation sales tax. Because we really wanted to see what the hit would be on the general fund sales tax if we had to go there. And so that's, that's when we started diving into, well, what, what is, what is the health of our rec sales and use tax fund, that half-cent penny? Tax that is in perpetuity, it's not going to sunset. And so we started to really uh look at what that funded. What it subsidized. And so that's where some of these other numbers came from, just to understand where, where all these numbers came from. Um, we do subsidize rec center operations. We do subsidize the aquatic center. Um, what else comes out of that? Is um halftime staff member, that's our um pool manager who works that seasonal. Job and then works at the rec center as our, our uh. Health and wellness coordinator at the rec center for the, the rest of that, that year. So that's out of a different budget. The loan payment on the rec center is in, is coming out of there. That will um be paid off in December two thousand twenty-four. So although that's an expenditure from now till then, and it, it does go away, so that helps us in this process. And then there's an admin fee of uh, of fifty-six thousand in there too. So, so those were expenditures outside of the subsidy. Um, for the rec center and the pool. So. We looked also at the revenues that we're currently uh getting from our, our sales tax fund. And that's uh now bringing in around a million dollars annually. So, and our projected fund balance at the end of the year is one point nine million in that fund. So, so we're fairly healthy. We've seen um good numbers coming in, in that fund. And so that's where the analysis started really, is, is how um. With the new debt service at the higher level, the five hundred and four thousand dollars at the eight million dollar level of debt service. If we put that into those expenditure numbers, will that um. Fund be able to pay for that? Or will we need to dip into those reserves and, and spend down those reserves too quickly to be comfortable with that? And we can also take a look at um where um if the rec sales and use tax can't afford that. Um, process with those numbers we came up with, how much of a hit is it going to be on the general fund? Rec sales and, I mean, rec, I mean, sorry, sales and use tax. So, so that, that's. All the numbers we kind of needed to see where, where we are. So that's what this analysis was. What, what we came up with and what I was fairly pleased was that uh. The debt service on the bond and paying the existing expenditures detailed above, out of our rec sales and use tax. Is, is pretty possible. What's, so then we said, okay, then we have to figure out with the consultant's help. Whether or not it could fund the operating cost of this new facility. While we're paying, paying it back for twenty-five years. And so that was the next dive we went to, and, and I feel pretty confident in the numbers produced by Ballard and King, the. The, the consultants that were part of the process of our aquatics facility master plan. And their knowledge of the industry and the numbers they produced, because they did produce an operations and maintenance. Um, and, and facility cost for us to operate um as part of that. That uh aquatic facility master plan um document. And so those are the numbers that we used in here. So these were numbers I just pulled out of somewhere. These are um vetted numbers by, by industry experts. So I just wanted to share that also with you. So their operations analysis of the new pool as designed. Had two different numbers, this uh regular season and then an extended season. Part of what we heard from the public in that process was the desire to have an extended season um of operations. And so the, the facility was designed for that. And we ran the numbers on, on both, just to see, see what it would cost us um to have an extended season. So, so where that, where that got us um. Is, you know, fairly close, you know, the, the, with the new debt service, the existing operation subsidy. The existing expenditures out of the fund that we just talked about. We added on the new operations and maintenance of, of the regular season and the new operation and maintenance of the extended season. Come up with some final numbers that we could then compare with our revenue at the, in the existing level of the rec sales and use tax fund. And so we were short there, but not, not a lot. For the regular season, we were short utilizing our um analysis of, of the um revenue. Of the rec sales and use tax. For the regular season, we were short by about ninety-one thousand dollars. For the extended season, expanded season, we were short by about one hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. So not, um, in the bigger picture, not something that could potentially um be funded somewhere else. And so. So it wasn't a number that was, oh, that's impossible, you know. It was a number to me that said, oh. That's possible if we can figure out some other revenue sources. Um, and these are all. You know, done with very conservative numbers, I think, too, you know, just, just so you understand that, you know, we're looking at, at uh. Fairly vetted numbers and fairly conservative numbers too. So, so that's, that's where I'm basing some of my optimism on too. So, um. When uh. You know, the annual subsidy required um. Before we l- lose our debt service on the rec center, you know, uh, so that'd be through two thousand twenty-four, and this is in one of the graphs in your, in your. In your packet there. Um, so regular season, annual subsidy required would be two hundred and forty thousand dollars. Once we um lose, you know, the two hundred and five thousand dollar debt service after two thousand twenty-four, for the remaining life of the bond. That regular season subsidy would only be thirty-five thousand. So this is where it starts to get optimistic, you know, for me. Expanded season was uh through two thousand twenty-four would be three hundred and four thousand dollars per year subsidy. And then there, for the, once we lose the debt service on the rec center, then we're back to uh the remaining life of the bonds at, at, at about a hundred thousand. Per year. So. So the aquatic facility master plan and, and our um recreation um trails master plan that we did in two thousand fifteen. Had some of the same recommendations to help us um create this facility and pay for this facility. And they were, they both came up with a multi-pronged, you know, funding approach to this. So if we. If we were, you know, shy, there was other ways to. Generate revenue with this, this project. So, um, so that's um some things we can talk about tonight. Um, and just want to share some of those with you. Um, we can't phase this project if maybe the, the consultants looked at what, what that would mean to phase the project. And the can't, the one piece that we could phase out of the project would be um kind of the um. The non-pool functioning, you know, uh, parts of the project. So we would need to build the bathhouse. With the mechanical rooms. We would need to build the two pools that those operate. What can be separated out of that design that exists would be the splash pad, because that can be its own, own entity and its own filtration system and everything. So that could be a, a secondary phase. We also have um some options in our design. Um, to put a second story on the bathhouse space, you know, the footprint of the bathhouse space. And to utilize that, that upstairs of that building as a flex space and a, and a revenue generator. So. Four ideas came out of the mass, master plan for that rentable community meeting room. Uh, Aqua Fitness, fitness studio. Medical office, physical therapy that could use the pool for part of that physical therapy. It'd be a private venture, but. Um, utilizing a public space with a fee-based use. Um, or what we need employed affordable housing too. Um, additional recommendations on um. How to kind of um. Bridge the gap, you know, for any funding uh uh downfalls we had on creation of the new pool. Would be a local foundation. So there could be a tax deductible donation process um. Put out to the public, you know, to fund, fund the pool project. Um, they also recommended um active marketing and sale of naming rights and sponsorships, you know, dedicated to the project. Funding and pieces of the project. Um, there's also grant funding that is not included in any of these uh numbers. Their one-time contributions for project construction or future phasing. So that secondary phase could be more of a grant-funded phase. And then another option, we just reduced the bond asking, asked from eight million to seven million. Um, which would drop our annual bond payments, drop the cost of the project over the course of the twenty-five years. And that, and that would be just another, another process that we would need to discuss and see if, if that would. If we could get what we need with a seven million bond versus an eight million. So it's a deep dive into um. You know, kind of the numbers game here on this. A lot of speculation there, obviously, but um some of the, I do want to. Let you know, I do trust our process that we did with the consultants. You know, I think they were um looking, they want the project to be successful. They're, they're gonna add those contingencies and some of those hidden costs in there. Um, what I also included in the packet, just for, for your knowledge, was just some, some local recent pool projects. So the um. The renovation of the Arvony uh pool improvements up in Basalt, and it kind of gave you just some information on. What that was projected as and what it actually ended up costing. So you can see some of that. And, and how they paid for it. And then also on the rifle renovation of their existing pool. And the two um pictures there are kind of the dream conceptual picture, and then the reality picture of what they, they could, could actually afford, so. And the, and there's some cost information in there on those two. And I just thought that was interesting, local pool projects. Started out with pretty pictures, um, the cost went crazy. Um, so. Just wanted to share that uh, that reality of what happened with construction of, in the last two years, really, so. Cut construction costs and just, just the difficulty of, of doing that. So really, um. My final words tonight are this, this process, uh. When I first started, I'm like, oh, what's this going to, you know, show us? Is it gonna show us that this project is not feasible? Is it gonna show us that it's gonna be a big hit on the um general fund? Uh, you know, budget? And is it, what is that going to affect on those other, you know, expenditures out of the general fund budget? Um, you know, with that money, who's gonna, how many departments in the town are going to be affected by that potential big hit on the general fund? And what I'm pleased to look at after this process is that I'm not seeing that, that be such a factor, that the general fund hit. If, if anything is not very, very large. It is over time, though. And so, so, so that's something to think about. It is over time, though. And so, so, so that's something to think about. But I was pretty pleased to see that, you know, if things keep continue and our rec sales and use tax fund continues to grow. Our subsidies of our facilities stayed fairly consistent. We get back to pre-COVID numbers at the rec center that, that lessen that subsidy. And the, the new pool operations was not so grandiose that we couldn't cover it almost with the fund. So, so it, it actually brought optimism to me versus pessimism. I was thinking it was gonna be the opposite, so. So Hollis, do you wanna add anything to that, just as far as Parks and Rec Commission's support of the project? Where they feel we should go?
In general, you know. Now, in general, I think the commission has, you know, the majority of the commission has been supportive. Of the project and everybody's trying to figure out how we can make this happen. It's not like if, it's more like how. And. Yeah, so I, I mean, I think we're kind of eager to hear how, how we want to proceed. And I know that, you know, I've actually heard from. One or two people on the commission go, you know, that are kind of ready to go out, start selling bricks. For the pool and stuff. So, you know, I do think, you know, we've got some really excited and motivated. Commission members for this. And I know I, I've also been approached by a couple of people that use the pool that said, hey, I thought. You needed a pool committee to help with whatever the funding's gonna be. So, you know, I do, I still think that there's. You know, enthusiasm for it and we certainly have the need now, so.
Thank you all. Thank you, Hollis. Thank you, Eric. Anything else I don't wanna? You're good?
Yeah, yeah, we're good. It's just, yeah, I think the, you know, this has been a kind of a fast-moving process. With our financial advisors. You know, if we want to move forward on this for an April election, to put it out to the public. You know, the next step is us, you know, getting bond counsel onboard, legal counsel to, you know. Look at the language, look at the rules on our rec sales and news text, look at the rules on the. General fund sales and news text and produce a. Out language that would come before you guys pretty quickly here.
Well, thank you. And when I think about this, even though we're not asking for a. Assuming we go to the voters in April, we're not asking for a tax increase, we're just asking for the ability to bond for this. We're essentially saying, here's what we can offer. And that's why I think this is really important. You know, we don't want to promise. Slides and all kinds of things if, if that's not in there. And so I think, I thought your memo did a great job of saying, here's what we think we can offer. And who knows what construction prices will do, but right now this is what we think we can do. And we may need to take some of these other steps. And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but you're looking for some guidance as to whether we'd entertain. Phasing or what we would entertain on the second story of the building. Or additional recommendations or thoughts on the funding itself. So I would ask the board to offer their thoughts on that. And Heather, I. Who does? Oh, Kevin.
Just a quick clarification. I think what we really need direction from the board on tonight. Is, should we bring you that ballot language? Because it'll have to be at the next meeting to get on the April agenda. So, and that is not pushing you guys at all, but it's, do we go forward with that next step? Or do we need to do some more work and look at potentially doing it in November instead of April? That's, that's what we're gonna need to know at the end of this tonight.
Okay, so add that to the list. And Heather, I can't, oh, there you are. You're unmuted. I'm wondering if you're ready to make some comments.
Um, yeah, sure. I can throw in a couple things. I mean, Eric and Hollis and the whole board and your team, I think. Thank you for this. I think this is exactly what we need to look at this very holistically. And be extremely realistic. If our line in the sand is not asking for the tax increase. And it's really just to be able to go for the bond, you know, it seems like we. From my perspective now, looking at the operations, et cetera. Under additional recommendations. My thought is that we have to go for all four of those things in a way. Perhaps looking at reducing this to something that's gonna fit within a seven million dollar budget. And with that, also kind of creating some of the. Local foundation, you know, the marketing, the naming rights, I mean, just. How can we get any of the capital expenditure out of the gate down, I think would be really important. And that's gonna, only gonna help us in the bond to have little cushion in there, right? For, to make sure that the bond covers the operations as well, not just now, but in a downturn and, you know, all of that. So I'm working my way up from the bottom to the top on recommendations, sorry. I'm really skeptical of the second story flex space as a revenue generation. I don't disagree that I think it has a lot of benefits, but, you know, our employee affordable housing doesn't make us money. We, you know, it's either a break even for us or it's sometimes subsidized. So. I, I don't think that's on the list as far as revenue generation. I, I think it's potentially an excellent idea for the use of that space. The other three, you know, same thing. I'm just kind of skeptical, right? Like, we fill the rec center a lot. Kinseyneras and, you know, renting it out, but I don't know that it's like any kind of like cash cow for us. That generates enough revenue of significance that it would make a difference. So. I don't mind talking about the second story flex space. It's usefulness and ensuring that it's at least a break even, but I don't see it as a revenue generation. I think there are some no brainers. I love the splash pad. I love that it's a way to expand the season. And, you know, have a lot of fun with that, but I do think it's not, when you think about the core values of what our pool needs to do. Health, safety, welfare, you know, teaching swimming lessons, safe place for our children to be in the summertime. It, it definitely feels like something that could be phased and it, you know, tears my heart out to say that, but. And then. Otherwise, I think this is, this is really on the right track. There's certainly a stake in the ground that I know we've heard from the E-Board and I think is important to our cap goals and everything else. And it was wrapped into the, to the Albany Pool and those improvements and, you know, some of the changes between a one point five and a three point three million dollar. Project, a lot of it had to do with. Energy use reduction and also, you know, having that prep to be net zero ready. So it's not net zero now, but. Can be as the technology kind of accelerates for that, but it, it's very close. So I think that's another stake in the ground that, you know, even if we're reducing this and we have to say. Reduce the bathhouse or, you know, make some changes to make sure that that's a, a stake in the ground and a statement we, we make with this renovation. I think it's an important one. That's all I have.
All right. Well, that was a lot. Good stuff. Other thoughts? Marty?
I have a couple of thoughts here. One question, which I would like some direction on. When do you see the rec center needing to be replaced? What's the lifespan of the rec center from where it is now?
Yeah, like, you know, we definitely, pre-COVID. Were seeing the kind of maximum. Membership level that was, you know, kind of, we didn't want to go too much over that just because people were losing. You know, their, their time in the space. It was getting, getting that maxed out. And obviously it changed during COVID. But that conversation was starting as far as an expansion of space.
Next five years, ten years, something like that?
Yeah, I mean, I would say. In ten years, yeah. It, yeah, we will need some additional space there.
The reason why I'm asking is if this gets approved, the money goes for this, then where do we get the money to expand the rec center? Or replace facilities? The second thing I'm really concerned with is with inflation where it is now. Where it looks like it's gonna be next year. Is that seven to eight million dollar number realistic? Or should we be allowing a ten to twenty percent increase in the cost of the pool? And I see like when you showed like the Albany Pool that. You know, it went up pretty dramatically. And I would think that this would easily go up ten percent, if not more, between the time that we do this. You get on the ballot, you get the bond and you actually break ground. I'm thinking not actually even gonna think about breaking ground till probably twenty twenty three.
Yeah, September twenty twenty three would probably be the earliest.
So I'm just, ten percent would be a modest allowance for inflation. I think twenty percent might be more realistic. Cost of materials, cost of labor, everything has gone up dramatically and isn't coming down anytime soon.
Just a quick clarification on that. Are these, do these numbers assume twenty twenty one dollars? Or have they accounted for the fact that we wouldn't break ground in twenty twenty three?
The, when we did this in two thousand twenty, the, you know, the facility master plan, those were in twenty, twenty dollars. But they built large contingencies into the project.
They put in a twenty percent contingency, which I get, but I'm just saying that may not be enough. And while I support, I, I know we need a new pool. Our old one's being held together with glue and tape. I'm just, I'm concerned about the economic feasibility. No one wants to seem to ask the taxpayers for tax money for this. I mean, that's my concern.
Well, I think I share Eric's optimism and while I agree with you and I appreciate you bringing it up, Marty, that. I'd bet a dollar that the construction costs are gonna be more than, than they're projected and that we're gonna need to make improvements to the rec center. Nobody's saying we're never gonna ask the voters to raise taxes, but I think this gives me optimism that we can start down this path. And always reserve the right to go back to the voters if and when we need to. And I, I would echo Heather's comments, I think, to a T. That I definitely would support phasing as suggested. I, I favor affordable housing because I think it's the best option for a couple of different reasons. And I also agree that the additional recommendations, probably all the above are gonna be necessary. And to Kevin's question, I, I do, I would like us to put this on the April ballot. Other thoughts? Luis?
Just one thought. I mean, we had the same sort of discussion when at the last Parks and Rec where it's not all gloom and doom. I think I, I share your optimism that, that there is a way to make this happen. And I think all the suggestions that the commission has come up with. From, you know, naming rights to a foundation that can help offset costs is great. One of the things I would love to also see is that, and I'm sure this isn't part of it yet, but knowing what the fees are gonna be for the rec center pool. I, I personally think that being really the only mid-valley pool between, you know, Aspen and Glenwood. That those fees should be reflected and, and it should really be kind of to the benefit of, of residents of this town. Where others are coming to use it, it should be, there should be a, a larger increase toward that. That's my personal viewpoint on this, but. I think, I think it would, it is gonna be obviously more expensive to operate than what we have now. And I would love to see an expanded season. Because it just means more use out of it for. Anyone, any pool users. But thank you, Eric. Thank you, Hollis. Thank you, Susan, for being here tonight. I think this is great work.
I agree. I think Heather's comments, I agree with Marty's concerns. It sounds like we're mostly on the same page. If the threshold question is, do we keep moving forward with this for April? My answer is yes. You know, ultimately, we are asking a question, right? And we're not making a decision, but we have to support putting it on there. We don't want to put it on there and say, oh, well, we don't really support that. So I think if we put it on there, then it's up to us to also support that. And, and try to make it happen. And I'm willing to do that. Couple details, I mean, Heather mentioned last time, just kind of. You know, not assuming that revenues are gonna keep going up forever, right? That everything's at sort of an all-time high right now across the whole economy. Including our, our revenues. And so I do think we have to just, I'd love to see a little bit of a contingency plan for if we go down. Ten percent or twenty percent or whatever it is in revenue. How do we, how do we deal with that for a few years like past recessions? The net zero issue that Heather raised, I'm, I think that is a stake in the ground. I mean, I, if, if it's impossible, and according to that, I remember when the designers came a year or so ago, we asked them and they said, we've looked all around the country and we haven't found one yet. I don't want to make that the thing that makes it not happen, but you know. Thirty minutes ago, we just had a whole big discussion about not adding any more natural gas capacity and eventually cutting it all off. And so I really don't want to do that. I really don't want to add a new facility that doesn't have kind of a, a plan in place to wean itself off natural gas. On a pretty quick timeline. So whatever it is that Basalt did with the heat pumps and all that, I'm interested in that. So I, that's very important to me, I'll say. And I think it's very important to the community, right? That's not me. That's our climate action plan. That's all of us. That's the whole discussion that we just had. So I think that we have to. It seems like that's not factored in yet. Is that right? That's, that'll be a totally additional.
Yeah, the, the master plan looked at, you know, net zero building. They kind of separated that, the pool operations, yeah, they hadn't figured that out yet, but the building itself. You know, the operations of the building itself, they, they did, you know, kind of look at that as being, you know, as efficient as, as the technology allows.
And it seems like there's a lot of design work that's still gonna happen, right? That's like a conceptual plan. And that's another reason why support going for the eight million rather than the seven million. Because I think between what Marty said about, there's gonna be more inflation than's already built, built in. And I think we're gonna add some costs there. So I support the eight million dollar bond ask. So that we can put some of that in or at least do the bare thing that we've planned on here. And along with that, I support the phasing of the splash pad. The second story on the, the building, it, it, I don't know if there's a way to phase that. Or maybe we use some funding out of our affordable housing fund, which I think we've built up to six hundred thousand or so. If, if we decide to make that affordable housing. I don't think that this should pay for a non-rec use of the second floor. And then my, sorry for being a little long-winded here. My other two thoughts are, I've mentioned it before, but I do think that that extra revenue. To cover the operating expenses should come from the tobacco tax. I just think we should. Commit to that at some point, because I feel like that's the only, like, kind of found money in our budget. That's like, we didn't pass that specifically to increase revenue. We did it to decrease use. It happens to be generating a healthy amount of revenue. We don't have it all allocated and funding, you know, core services or anything. So I think that that, this goes along with that ballot language. And I just want to make sure that the ballot language for this allows for that. So if this says it leverages the sales and rec use tax, the general fund and the nicotine tax. And the nicotine tax language is already set up for that. And we could get a legal opinion to, to make sure, you know, because it says health and wellness activities. So I, I just feel like that's the way to, to pay for the extra part. And even in a recession, people keep smoking, so that's not as volatile. I mean, really, we've seen that. That, that never goes down, unfortunately. And then my only other question is just, I, I fully support a really aggressive, like, fundraising campaign. And, you know, the sell a brick and like the small scale, but also the big scale. We've got a lot of people with a lot of money around here. And I don't know what that looks like, but my, my question is that, on that is about timing, like. If we start moving down the path of an eight million dollar bond question, but then we raise two million dollars. Like, does that change the amount that we actually bond or? I don't know that I even need an answer to that. It just seems like it's something to think about, but it seems like that needs to happen relatively soon. Maybe that would just help with the, the phasing and, and make the whole thing happen or something like that. But I feel like there's the potential to pay a decent chunk of this through a pretty aggressive fundraising effort. I don't want to see the pool named by, after somebody, I think that that's silly when a municipal pool has somebody's name on it. But I think, you know, it's like the so-and-so lap lanes and the so-and-so splash pad, like, that's fine. Um, and that's what we've seen at like the pickleball courts and, and the climbing wall in here, but it's still, it's the Carbondale Rec Center, I think it should be the Carbondale Pool. And I'll leave it at that.
Kevin and then Marty.
All I was going to say is, I think. To your, to your point about fundraising.
I can't hear Kevin, sorry, microphone.
How's that?
That's better, thank you.
No problem. I, I think it would, I, I wouldn't use fundraising to try to lower the bond amount. I would focus when you're talking about fundraising and when you're talking to folks about donating money. Making sure they understand that it may go towards construction or operations. Because I think you're. You're not going to know how much this thing really costs until it's done. And i- it's just separating it like that, it'd be dangerous, that's.
I just think having a fundraising campaign with a really clear target and kind of measurable things that people can say, oh, my money's going to make this happen. I think that that generates more interest than just a vague, like, do you want us to help, do you want to help us pay for this? So I'm no expert on that stuff, but somebody is, and I think that it, it deserves a really serious effort.
Marty?
A couple of things, I didn't mean to give the impression that I don't think we should go to the taxpayer's side. I mean, this is up to the taxpayers to decide, it's up to the voting public to decide. But I did want to make my point about the inflation, which concerns me, phasing is one good approach. There are a couple of other things, the tobacco tax is a decreasing source of revenue. We've seen it decrease and it's going to keep on decreasing, hopefully that was the point of the tax. To make it less economically viable for people to smoke and it's working. The revenue is going down. The second thing is.
Can I just ask you a question though?
Sure.
Is that a concern, I mean, we're.
You're saying that this could be a source of revenue, including operating revenues for the pool. And I'm saying this is a tax that is going down and the math that we're collecting every year, hopefully.
I agree, and so I'll be specific, my recommendation is that we dedicate the first hundred thousand dollars a year, which covers the subsidy here. And I don't think it's going to go down below that and everything over that is, I mean, maybe the Hope Center grant doesn't come through and it's toward that position. Otherwise, it's to grants to other organizations to an after-school program.
The other thing, and I don't.
Clarify before we spend time, Kevin, do you feel like the language? Where we're saying all sales tax includes tobacco tax, so we don't need to discuss this?
I, I don't know an answer to that, I don't know if Mark has a sense, I think that's probably a better question for the bond counts.
Okay, can, can we just ask them, unless you have an answer?
I don't have a quick answer and I wasn't at your last discussion, some of these issues are new to me. But I'm happy to be in the loop with these guys on it.
Okay, sorry Marty.
And we can leave the tobacco tax aside. I would have an issue with our using our five hundred thousand dollar housing fund. To provide for the second story for affordable housing. I think it, there are better uses we can find for it. But aside from that, like I said, I'm all for sending this to the voters. And, you know, they're going to decide and then of course we abide by whatever they decide.
Okay, thank you. Lonnie, any comments?
Um, I'm supportive, I, there's been so much anticipation about this project that I think the timing of putting it on in April um, is. Good timing, it'll help to perhaps offset some of the perceived negatives uh, that people are feeling with what is being developed around town. This is a positive, um, so, you know, I appreciate everybody's comments, I agree with um, all that have spoken and I would uh, support putting it on in April.
Great, um, so there's a little bit of variation, but essentially full support for putting it on in April and uh. Onward and upward.
So I would suggest that um, we get the answer to the American tobacco tax question. And then we will incorporate that to the best of our ability to allow it, but not require it to be used.
Yeah, I'm not sure it's going to be able to be used, but let's get the question answered.
Yeah.
And then all these other things, you know, the language, I, I don't know how specific it'll need to be, but it, the project may be phased, there may be something on the second floor. And I don't think we have to get into the details on the ballot in terms of other funding, you know, like whether we name it or anything, I don't think that's.
No, this will be a pretty strict question of, can we borrow this money and use these sources to repay it?
Okay, I guess where it will come down is if there's a campaign out there, then. What we're communicating in the, for the campaign for this um, this question, so. Yeah, Marty?
I think we need to be agreed on the amount of funding that we're asking for, right? Whether it's seven million or eight million.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, I, yeah, good, good clarification, I, I agree with Ben that might as well ask for it all.
Yeah, no, I agree a hundred percent.
Anybody disagree with that?
No.
It isn't going to come in less than eight million, we can guarantee that.
I thought Heather had said, Heather might want to clarify, I thought she had supported the lower ask.
Heather?
Yeah, I mean. I think we know if, if we set a certain amount, it's only going to get bigger, so maybe it's that we're. Shooting for a seven million dollar facility, but we need to ask for eight million, I, I don't know. And, and, you know, I was just looking at it from the recommendation of. What we're trying to. How Eric is trying to balance, you know, the fun payoff, the debt payoff with the operations with this, 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 right? So. If we're confident eight million and we can still pay that debt service along with the operations and everything else. Yes, it's not like it's going to get cheaper, but I don't think we can design an eight million dollar facility. Like, we need to design a six million dollar facility, knowing that that delta is the only cushion that we have, if that makes sense.
Well, I would phrase it a different way, I would say, I, I agree with what you said, but in terms of asking the voters. The only reason I would suggest us asking for seven is, is if we don't think the voters would support eight, they'd only support seven and I don't, I don't think that's the case. So, question is, can we be, uh, can we be disciplined if we ask for eight, they give us eight? And we decide we don't want to borrow that much, and I think we can be.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, yeah.
Okay. Go forth and prosper.
You as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric, thank you, Hollis.
Thank you, happy holidays, everyone.
Okay, uh, our last uh, discussion topic of the night is item number 13. Police Department Obama Pillars Priorities Discussion, or as Richard referred to it earlier, Community Policing. So, um, Chief Wilson put together a memo and this is continuing our discussion from last time. And really continuing the discussion that started, um, maybe even before we hired Chief Wilson, but certainly shortly thereafter, so. Take it away, chief.
I'm going to take a lesson from Mr. Schorsman.
Uh-oh.
Alright, I'm just going to start off with, that was a, for me, that was a pretty detailed memo. I put a lot of uh, work and effort and bounced a lot of ideas off of, off of Kevin and, and even uh, Mr. Mayor Richardson. So are there any questions, how about I start off with that, because I can be long-winded?
Maybe, um. Okay, fair enough. I really liked how uh, the chief kind of outlined um, some perspectives. On what's working and what's not. I thought that, um, I still think that the pillars are a great way to look at things and I appreciated. Kind of his outline of how compliance could work. So, I don't necessarily have uh, questions, but just thank you, chief, for putting so much thought into this.
I think the department uh, in- initially was apprehensive of putting together a, an advisory board. Right, not knowing what that looks like and the more that we uh, talk about this, and thank you to. Trustee Sparhawk, she provided last time a recommendation to get in touch with uh, the city of North Clinton. And they have been more than accommodating as far as uh, how to put together a, a co-production advisory uh, board. Which I, I think is just a fantastic idea. Uh, and I think the department overall is pretty excited to get that underway.
I don't want to necessarily jump to that, but that's the one comment I had is, I do like that idea and I think it kind of sums up some of the comments. And having never done it, maybe, maybe you've already thought through this or it's not necessarily an issue, but separating oversight and advocacy, I think is going to be really important with that. Board, um, and it seems to me they would have to do one or the other and not both, but um. So, but anyway, that was my only comment on that. But maybe, maybe framing this, this discussion and, and what the, the purpose for tonight is. You know, I thought it would be useful if uh, the chief offered some perspectives again of what's working and what's not. Unfortunately, there's some incidences that we still can't get into details about. Um, but nonetheless, there's been lots of other stuff you guys have been uh, involved with, so lots of uh, other stuff to discuss. There's been a series of uh, events that where you've received feedback, be it citizens academies or your countless meetings with individuals. Or uh, the outreach in the community, and I think from there that's informed the Obama's pillars and which ones of those you feel like. And you feel like the community thinks should be priorities, um, so this is a discussion to say, well, are, are they on track? The ones that um, are included in here. The community board is certainly a big component, uh, the advisory board and whether or not the board wants to pursue that. So, and Richard, thanks for hanging out, you're, you're welcome to um, make comments, so. Any questions or comments of chief?
No, I just wanted to thank him for um, giving uh, Officer Paula ZO the uh. Flexibility of participating with the Garfield County Latino Community Committee. He was formally installed on Monday and he's excited about that, so that really um, gives visible impact to outreach to the community. And um, the attention to the diversity and other components of um, our population that um. That deserve attention, so that was a, a good, good move, I think.
Thank you.
Yep.
Ben?
Thanks Kirk, um, I, this is a ton of work, I can tell, and, and I really appreciate it. You know, I feel like the main uh, sentiment that I heard and felt from our community following the incident a year ago with that arrest. And, and everything that went down with that was a. A desire for more transparency when something like that happens. People talked about why was the body cam footage released quickly and, you know, all that kind of stuff. As well as uh. Of, just a, a continued focus and a heightened focus on de-escalation.
Yes.
And use of force being a, an absolute last resort. Maybe you can just touch on, how do you feel like this plan, and I see some places in here, I'm not questioning whether it does, but I think for the public's benefit. How do you feel like this plan addresses those two concerns of transparency when there's an incident? That involves questionable use of force and potential discrimination and all those things that, that people get concerned about. And, and how, you know, might things happen differently in the future and then how also with the, the training and the de-escalation and, and things around use of force? Could you just touch on how this plan addresses those concerns?
Sure, so it, in, each of the 29 pillars have a plethora of information behind them. Uh, which I couldn't possibly throw at you uh, either tonight or, or last go around. But some of the things that, that are discussed are publishing more to be compliant with, with uh, Senate Bill 217. Which went into effect in 2020, the summer of 2020. So up until that moment, we'd never even had a request for our body camera footage. We had, had body cameras for quite a while, but we'd never had a request and, and suddenly. Uh, the public is aware they can request body camera footage up until a certain amount of time depending on a, a whole bunch of scenarios. And so, we never had a policy on it. Well, Senate Bill 217 required us to create a policy on that. And President Obama's 21st Century uh, Policing Task Force says, this is a really good idea to have a policy simply on body cameras. When to publish things, uh, now state statute actually requires that if there's a, a, a questionable use of force, that it, it shall be published. And so, fast forward, as soon as I walked in the door, we started uh, looking for a, a new body worn camera system. Because the, the one that we had prior was, was old and dilapidated and we didn't have the software to even run it. Now we have all those things in place and I think this is a, a prime example of some of the things that. The president's recommendations are, are just, they're common sense things that police departments have just overlooked for such a long time. Have the ability to, to publish and provide body camera footage and that's just one thing. That having.
Thanks for that, maybe you could touch on just the kind of renewed or continued or enhanced focus on de-escalation tactics and training around that.
Absolutely.
Being, you know, implicit bias, those are, those are kind of the buzzwords, but they're the things that people have been really concerned about.
Sure, uh, so Sergeant Kirkland, Sergeant Rupp and myself sat down and we went through all of our uses of force, not just in the last year. But over the last five years, when, when we actually started uh, keeping detailed records of it. Of course, Colorado's always required uh, records of use of force. And so what we did was we looked into, we watched body camera footage if it was still, still around, we read reports. Uh, we talked to the officers if they were still here. And we identified one thing that was the key component, whenever we had a questionable use of force. Uh, when, where the public thought that, that was right on the line or over the line. It, it, uh, it was right on the cusp of being a static and dynamic situation. And then we kind of broke that down, are these, so the dynamic situations are the ones that are flowing and, and require action right away. A static uh, type of call for service is one where we have nothing but time. But uh, for example, our, our standoff at, at Days Inn a while back. That was a static situation that had the potential to become dynamic very rapidly. And those are the types of scenarios where either the officer or the person involved. Or some other third party uh, involvement, a, a, a victim or witness, somebody gets involved and now. That situation devolves into a, a situation that an officer has to take action. When we had the time before, and so we tried to break down. Wha- wha- what do the numbers look like? And it's, it's roughly 50% of the time, an officer may have goofed, said the wrong thing. Thought, you know, I have to act right now and stepped in and then that situation uh, devolved into a situation where. Uh, an officer had to, had to use force, had to restrain that person right then, right there. And we also recognized at the same time with Sergeant Kirkland in, in the office. All of our defensive tactics training, all of our arrest control training, firearms training, our TASER training, we didn't have scenario-based training. That addressed that situation. we didn't have scenario-based training that addressed that situation. With scenario-based training that addressed static, with scenario-based training that addressed dynamic, but we didn't bring them together for those scenarios that have probably the most potential for, for bad outcomes. And so Sergeant Kirkland, he's, he's also the Defensive Tactics Instructor at the Community College at the Police Academy. He got with Stu Curry, who's the director up there and the assistant director. And they sat together and created a whole training program that I actually went through, through the, the academy this October, I, I attended those classes, that addresses those specific situations, not just the static, not just the dynamic, but the, right on the, the cusp where if an officer goofs, it can go bad. If a suspect goofs, it can turn bad. And if somebody else comes into the scene, it can also go bad. And so we now have, it's in its infancy stage, there's no question about it, but we have a training program that is being taught at the academy. It's actually spreading to other academies throughout the state now, because we're one of the first that created that. And we're also teaching that in-house here. In all of those, all of those disciplines, firearms, TASER, with an effort to de-escalate as opposed to create issues.
Thank you for that insight. I mean, that's the kinda story I think we need to be sharing. I know you guys are doing a lot on publicity and social media and all that. But I still feel like there's a, like the fact that Richard is interested in this topic, came tonight to ask us, when are we gonna talk about this? Didn't know it was on the agenda tonight. People don't know that we're talking about this tonight. I still wanna see some community conversation where this kinda stuff is presented, where that's talked about. So I hope that that's still in the plans, but I really.
Absolutely.
Good. I really, I appreciate everything that's in this, the, I think that the committee that you're putting together. And that's, I mean, that's just a fascinating story that you guys reviewed your own footage to identify what caused us to use force and how could some of those have been avoided? And you identified that and created a training program. I think that's, that's great work. Thank you.
Well, I mean, you said it in here where you spoke about Sergeant Kirkland teaching officers to slow down, identify the call, see if it requires an immediate response. The other thing was try to work through it slowly and methodically. And you spoke about the gray areas. Those are the tough ones, I assume.
Yes.
And the amount of training has been dedicated to de-escalation and conflict resolution. And that's the message we need to get out to our community.
Absolutely.
Okay. You know, we know, but we need to get that out to the whole community. And I don't envy you with the, you had old body cams to begin with. It wasn't a procedure in place. We couldn't even provide, from what I understood, the footage. It had to go out to another agency to be processed.
Correct.
Which further delayed the process. So, I mean, we've taken a big step forward. You have new equipment, you have new procedures over how to handle it, how to develop the pictures. And I mean, this is a, a good step. And you're involving the community, both with the Police Academy, with reaching out to the Latino community. It's, not just the Latino community, the whole community.
Yes.
Okay, so I mean, you're making large strides. I know we don't have as many officers as we'd like, but you also got two new officers. So hopefully you're gonna train them in the way that we would all like to see them be.
Absolutely.
And hopefully, as our force continues to grow, we get more recruits, there are more that will have gone through this training and will be the type of officers that we're proud to have.
At our last meeting, you mentioned working with Janet Gordon, who I happen to know.
Yeah.
And if you do work with her, I don't know if you started that yet or not, but she would be really good at helping you guys develop more of an intuitive recognition of the subtleties of the gray areas within a dynamic interaction, right?
For sure.
So I would be interested in seeing how that all works out for you.
I believe, and it's been a while since I spoke with her via email, but the last conversation she was planning on coming in, in the spring to, to share with us again. I think the last training for the town hall received training, I'm gonna say that was probably three years ago that, that she did that, but we're looking for a little, little different specifically for the police department through.
Well, good. Thank you.
Luis, did you have your hand? Oh, no, I just wanted to commend Kirk and the officers. Because I think the one thing that I saw to hear that was really impressive is, is, you know, policing with compassion, which, which I think is so crucial in terms of what the officers are encountering. And I know it's balancing that sometimes there are developmental health issues or there might be other things that they're having to attend to. So I think that's, that's a, a great way to approach this because, you know, having that, as Ben pointed out, that gray is, is, is really critical, important. So, thank you.
Thank you. And, and I will say, in the hiring process, we're trying to figure out when, when we have interviews, because we, we are not receiving the numbers of applicants that we have in years past for open positions, how do you identify that? And I think one thing that, that this advisory committee, my hope would be able to do is to do something very similar to the town manager hiring. So police officers will be in one room, they'll interview based on police knowledge. You know, can you, ethics, integrity, things of that nature. But then to also have members of the advisory committee to sit in on another community-type panel, again, very similar to, to what we just had, to, to see, to these individuals that are applying, do they have that compassion level? Are they black and white thinkers? Are they gray thinkers? Can they be trained?
And that would be somewhat similar to the process that you went through.
Absolutely.
Well, good.
All right. Rich, go ahead, if you would. So we know who's speaking and we can get you amplified.
I'm Rich, I'm Richard Votero. And I'm curious if the memo is available to the public.
Yeah, it's on the website.
Okay. And then I also am consistent with what Ben was talking about of modifying some of the processes or being, exposing what, what gains we've, we've made in change, towards our community policing. And, and I'm appreciating what you're saying and that, I mean, it's increasingly difficult to manage, you know, the society. And as we do that with compassion and have the officers, I appreciate the slowdown aspect. Because I, I think that's what I experienced the other day, is that seemed like it was, it was reasonably paced.
I would, I would agree.
Yeah, yeah. So I'm, I'm just fortunate to come tonight and I appreciate that idea and that, that this is what we're talking about.
Could you, Kirk, just share your thoughts on that? Like, how do you see the, the public getting this information? And I, I still envision some, you know, well-advertised, large event where people are still able to give some input, but there's some level of like, here's what we've done, we want your feedback on it. Here are our next steps, you're informing this. So it's still a, a two-way communication.
I will be perfectly honest in saying that is where I'm struggling.
Okay.
And I would love feedback from, from you all as far as what are your thoughts on how to get that out? Is that a PR, is that a letter from, from the chief? Is that a, a speaking tour? I, I, I don't have experience in, in that arena and.
I mean, in my mind, it's using our communications consultant, PR Studio. And, but first, it's probably organizing an event. I mean, to me, it's probably an event at Third Street Center or, or here that's translated and that's, that's, that's an open dialogue, but that, and it, that isn't focused on the incident that's got pending legal action around it, but that's focused on the relatively new chief and, you know, and, and your vision and, and the steps that we've taken in the past year following that.
I, I think it's a combination of things. And, and I've been brainstorming a, an op-ed to thank the community for helping with the hiring of, of Lauren Gister. And obviously, I'm pretty late in doing that, but through this conversation, I thought, huh, maybe, you know, do we incorporate some of that? Is it better for me or you? We can talk about that. I think in terms of, of an event, I hadn't necessarily thought of that. But if we did that, I, I would like it to be after the Spanish-speaking academy, if possible. Just because I wouldn't want it to look like we're jumping to conclusions before we have that feedback as well. But that's, you know, delayed a little bit, so. And, and certainly engaging PR studios, what does that look like? You know, putting it out on your face, that you're the police department's Facebook page, I think makes sense. Because it does, it sounds like that, what you guys did is really pretty cool, you know, and pretty responsive. I would say, not only for the incidents that, that we encounter, but nationwide. You know, if, if the country, if all our police departments did that, we'd make some quick change.
I think so.
Yeah. Marty?
Yeah, I mean, what about something with soap or sun? You know, a letter from the desk of the chief?
I would agree with that approach, really. I mean, that's.
Where we stand today.
Yeah.
What improvements have we made?
I think we have a, a great relationship with Mr. Steinler over there. And, and he went through the academy over the summer. I think that is an excellent.
I mean, they're a community newspaper and this is community news.
Yeah.
So I think this is like right up their alley.
Absolutely.
Also gives you a chance to write it and reread it, and reread it a second time before you submit it to them.
And they're publishing in Spanish too, so.
Right. So I mean, that's, I'm saying, that'd be a natural.
So there, so there is. I have one quick comment.
Go ahead, Evan.
So both, I believe, well, I, I mean, I know Sheriff Valerio does his, whatever the heck it's called, Straight Talk, Facebook Fireside Chat, some version of that. I think that'd be really interesting. For you, Chief Wilson, just like connecting via that, have it translated would be really interesting. And then, no, there's the Eagle County Sheriff or the City of Eagle. And his name is escaping me at the moment because it's nine o'clock, I'm running out of steam. But they, I, one of those guys does it too over there in Eagle. And his is a little less formal, right? His is like more fun. Doing it over the barbecue or like whatever community events they're having. I've just really appreciated being on, and it must be Eagle County's Facebook page. And, you know, how they connect. And I think you're doing it with the officers, that's a really good start. But, but I think having it actually center around these pillars and what we're doing and how and where we still fall short and we're trying to get better, you know, all of those things, you know, having it around this, like where it's of substance would be really great way to connect, maybe.
Sure.
Get positive, I think, too. I mean, you know, the more that you're out there, and I, I do agree that the sun would be a good avenue. It's quick, it's repetitive, and people will get to know you. I mean, everybody knew who Gene Schilling was, right?
For sure.
So the goal is to get everybody to know and recognize what Kirk Wilson does and what he's all about. And having a, a brief blurb in a regularly timed publication would be great. And I'm sure Raleigh would put it in to the Spanish edition as well. So yeah, that might be simple. And I mean, I'd be happy to help you with that.
I love the idea.
So Chief, I noticed you say that the Spanish-speaking Community Academy will take place in the first half of 2022.
Yes.
I think if, if it doesn't happen until the latter part of the first half, then I think we need to act before then in terms of communicating. And I would recommend, you know, I, I don't know if the board supports the idea of the Community Co-Production Policing Advisory Board, but I kinda like the idea of revisiting that concept, deciding whether we wanna have an event. It was, we promised the community via a press release that we would, at some event, introduce folks to our new town manager, Lauren Gister. I might suggest that we revisit this idea after she's on board. And maybe it's a, a combination event that we're talking about community policing as well as introducing Lauren. She may have thoughts on a board.
Sure.
I think we put the feelers out. You know, I'm not so sure, we may not get people signing up for that board. We might get a couple, but we might not get critical mass. I don't know. And, and to me, that seems like the next step is once Lauren's on board, we revisit this, ask her her thoughts on the board, decide on an event when we can embrace the community and go from there, unless anybody has any other ideas. Or Chief, if you do.
It's late, no.
Okay. So Kathy or Kevin, can you pencil something on the agenda no sooner than February? Great. The next, the next iteration of this discussion?
Absolutely.
Great. All right. Thank you, Chief. Thanks for your efforts in the memo and, and on the job. Thank you.
Thanks, Kirk.
And please pass along to Sergeant Kirkland and everyone just that, you know, that, that story and, and what you're doing, because I didn't know about it either, is, is remarkable and, and commendable.
And I just think the fact that you're leading a department that's embracing this kind of approach and this kind of change, rather than resisting it, right? Because we could have a real.
Absolutely.
Challenge right here if you were sort of defending the, the police who don't wanna change things and if they're feeling attacked and all that. But it's good that we're working together on this and we've got, we're on the same team and we've got the same goals in mind.
Absolutely.
You have a great opportunity because you are getting younger officers and you are molding them to the type of department that you would like to see it be. So I mean, there's a lot of opportunity there. You take the advantage of it and that's good.
For sure.
All right. Thank you, Chief. Our last order of business is minutes. Anybody have any questions, the staff, on the minutes provided in the packet? Okay. Anybody not planning to be here next week on the 21st, when we talk about short-term rentals? And what else are we talking about next week? That's it? I thought we were, right, that's it?
I'll be remote.
Okay. Everybody else gonna be here? Okay.
Yes.
Great. Well, we are adjourned.